At eighty-eight point one, this is listener-supported public radio KKJZ Long Beach, Los Angeles, and KKJZ HD1 Long Beach, a service of California State University Long Beach, also worldwide at jazzandblues.org.
Hey, it's me, Steve Tyrell, keeping you company for your ride home here on KJazz eighty-eight point one. We're gonna start this last hour off with my buddy Billy Vera. And you know, John, he's got a room with a view.
Oh, yeah?
Of the blues. (Music) I've got a room. I've got a room with a view. I've got a room. I've got a room with a view. I've got a house full of troubles and a room with a view of the blues. Pictures on my wall, just a ceiling above my head, no rugs on my floor, no pillow on my bed. I've got a room. I've got a room with a view. Got a house full of troubles and a room with a view of the blues. These old walls are closing in on me. These old walls are closing in on me. Ain't no food in my icebox, nothing on TV. The air is getting so low, it's about to touch the floor. Doors keep on knocking, knocking on my door. I've got a room. I've got a room with a view. I've got a house full of worries and a room with a view of the blues. Don't know what my baby is trying to do to me. I've got a room. I've got a room with a view. I've got a house full of worries and a room with a view of the blues. There ain't no room to be happy, oh, in a room with a view of the blues.
Excuse me, we're starting. Thank you. Welcome to the City of Seal Beach City Council meeting, November thirteenth, twenty seventeen. And, please join me in the pledge.
My pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Maslava.
Here.
Mayor Proton Vera Papa.
Here.
Councilmember Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sis Darsick.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Are there any council members that want to arrange anything, rearrange?
Um, I think I... Wait, hold on, I'm sorry. No, I think we're good, thanks.
Okay. See you then.
Mayor Maslava, if I could read into the record items that were distributed after the posting of the agenda.
Please.
This evening, there was a correction made to the minutes, item D, and that is before you. We have an email communication that was between the city staff and city council regarding various items. There was an email received from Robert Goldberg regarding various items, and we have received two PowerPoint presentations this evening, and that's all.
Thank you. This evening, we have a couple of presentations. The first one is Republic Services. Jeff Snow will enlighten us at AB, that's Assembly Bill eighteen-twenty-six, and give us an update. Welcome, Mr. Snow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Jeff Snow with Republic Services, and AB eighteen-twenty-six is primarily all about food.
I thought you brought an apple for all of us. Darn.
Republic Services introduced this legislation to council last February, and we're here tonight as kind of a refresh and to update council on some of the community outreach activities that we've engaged in during the interim period. We met, have met with several business leaders in the community, and we had a public chamber-sponsored gathering at Glory Days, hosted a lunch meeting where we went through the legislation and the impact that it will have on businesses throughout the community. The chamber, through the weekly squeal, has also been providing written outreach to the community, which is up here on the slide, and references the AB eighteen-twenty-six state legislation, as well as gives some general information about it. What's driving this legislation is really a desire for cleaner air in our communities. The California Air Resources Board, ANCAL Recycle, sponsored this bill, which was overwhelmingly passed by Assembly and signed by Governor Brown in late twenty-fourteen. And food waste is a big problem. If it was a country, it would be third, only to China and the U.S. in the amount of pollution that comes from food waste decomposing in landfills. It emits what's called a short-lived climate pollutant known as methane. And methane in our air got a lot of attention last spring with the Porter Ranch gas leak. And essentially, lots of organics and food waste in landfills do the same thing. So this map shows biomethane emissions in the United States of America, and where we have lots of food waste going into the Bowerman landfill in Irvine, which is what Seal Beach uses for its residual materials, we see lots of methane pollution. So AB eighteen-twenty-six is really designed to get rid of this methane from our atmosphere as well as find higher and better uses for the food waste. Food is energy, and if our bodies don't use it, we can use it for other purposes. AB eighteen-twenty-six requires local government to develop a mandatory organics recycling program. This is not considered optional. All commercial businesses will be, it'll be incumbent upon them to source, separate their food waste separate from their trash in a different container, and it provides for the city to put in fee programs, and if required, enforcement programs to help achieve the mandates of it. It also requires the city to provide outreach and education, which we believe we have been doing through our different chamber activities. It's phased in over time. We're currently in phase two, which is based on the amount of organics generated by businesses. If I can just take a step aside, there is zero impact to residences. There's no residential requirement for food waste recycling in AB eighteen-twenty-six. It is just the commercial sector. There are some fail safes. SB six-oh-five has passed. In the event that municipalities fail to achieve getting fifty percent of organics out of the landfill, by twenty, by twenty-twenty-two, the Air Board will directly take over regulation of this regulation, of this new legislation through SB six-oh-five. The EPA has given us a food recovery hierarchy. We think that this is very important, and the program that's proposed for Seal Beach will be closely aligned with this. We want to take this nine million tons of food waste that's going into our landfills in the state and move it as far up on that food recovery hierarchy as possible. And that animation took me a little while to figure out and get it to just line up perfectly. So we want to start with source reduction, and then, really, we shouldn't be feeding machines before we feed hungry people. So we have a robust partnership with the Waste Not OC Coalition. This is a coalition of food recovery agencies, including the OC Food Bank, Second Harvest Food Bank, over two hundred pantries, and it's currently not only endorsed but funded by the County of Orange in a rare five-to-zero supervisory vote. It got their unanimous support. And a real industry first is Republic Services sponsoring of a food recovery truck with Food Finders and Food Recovery Agency headquartered in Lakewood, California, that will be available for Seal Beach commercial businesses that choose to donate portions of their edible food. There are additional benefits for your businesses that do that. They receive a sixty percent of cost basis charitable tax deduction, and they're part of helping to improve society. So the Waste Not OC Coalition is our first approach to diverting food waste from landfills. We hope to be able to achieve somewhere around eight to ten percent of the total food waste in the city being donated through the Waste Not OC Coalition. After that, after that, in source-separated containers that will be green for food waste, we will use a dedicated truck with special gasket seals to try to avoid, food waste can be very liquid-based, so specially-designed truck that will pick up that, that food waste, bring it to a facility in Orange, California called COR. COR stands for centralized organic recycling equipment, and it creates a food slurry or a food shake out of the apple cores and different items that go in. I will not open this. That material is then put on a five-thousand-gallon stainless steel tanker truck, and it's driven down the four-oh-five to the L.A. County Sanitation wastewater facility located in Carson, California. And this is the same facility that is receiving sewage from over twenty cities in L.A. County, and they have anaerobic digesters that capture the biogas and create electricity from it. This facility is now creating a surplus, more energy than is needed to operate the plant. So I think we're all in agreement that it's a much better use of, of the apple than just putting it in the landfill where it creates pollution to recover green energy. The digestate, or what's left over after the anaerobic digestion, is then brought to a compost facility, and we have new technologies for composting called CASP, or Covered Aircated Static Pile, and it does a very effective job of managing some of the nuisances involved in compost, primarily the odor. So it's completely covered with a negative air system. The facility that your material will go to is in Chino, California, and it's operated by Agrumen. Agrumen is Southern California's largest composter, and Republic Services is a joint venture partner, so we've secured capacity for your city for all four phases of this, of this legislation. Recycling food waste is very expensive. We need separate trucks, separate containers, separate employees, and then the cost of converting it to the slurry and composting it is three or four times higher than landfilling it. It is an unfunded mandate, and in Seal Beach, because there's a lot of food waste for a relatively small commercial base, the overall cost is roughly eighteen percent of what the commercial revenues in the city currently are. We have negotiated with city staff and are offering a phased-in approach of nine percent upon commencement of the program and a nine percent at the next scheduled rate increase, which would be July of next year. In assessing the cost recovery fees, we have a very strong recommendation, as does our association, the Solid Waste Association of North America, to assess the fees to the entire commercial sector. That sector is who this law applies to. And with that, the food waste containers won't cost any more than the trash containers. So there won't be any economic disincentive to not participate. The cost will be the same, it will be a blended rate with the trash. Cities that have done this, which is the vast majority of them, have realized very, very good compliance with the law, and it really minimizes the compacts, the, the, the cost impacts to everybody. The other way of assessing it directly to the food waste generators, it's very, very high impact to them, and in general, they will not comply without ample enforcement. So Mission Viejo, Laguna Beach, Huntington Beach, Anaheim, all of these cities that have adopted programs in the past year have done this sector-wide approach by doing a single adjustment over the entire commercial base so that they have a blended rate, same for food waste as it is for trash. What's the difference in Seal Beach currently? The price per yard of trash that's picked up four times a month is about fifty-five dollars. Spreading it out to the whole commercial sector would increase that to fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. The other way, charging just those restaurants and supermarkets where the food is, is directly generated and collected from, a very expensive proposition with a very, very high negative impact for them. So highest and best use, robust partnership with Waste Not OC, recycling solutions through the COR in Orange and L.A. County Sand. We are recommending the commercial sector-wide increase because we want a successful program for Seal Beach. Again, if we don't achieve at least fifty percent reduction of organics in landfills, the Air Board will take over this, this regulation, and we think the enforcement and consequences for them are something that we'd all like to avoid. Cal Recycle is, is a good agency, understands solid waste, understands municipalities, so because of these reasons, we're seeing most cities do the sector-wide increase, and again, it's our recommendation, but we'll provide the program and, under any circumstances that council chooses. So if anybody's ready for a snack, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
The compost, the, the end result of all of this.
Yes.
Moving this stuff around for about a hundred and fifty miles, what happens at the end to the compost? It's marketed?
Compost is marketed. We have it available in bulk. We also bag it for different companies. We do some private labeling. Albertson's is a great example. They donate a majority of the, the food that they don't sell in their grocery stores to the Second Harvest Food Bank through Waste Not OC, and they help end hunger, and then the remainder is collected by our company, composted at the Agrumen facility, and they actually market it under the Albertson's brand and tell their story of sustainability and keeping a closed loop on it. So we have products, soil blends, soil amendments. This is a potting mix that is absolutely ready to go. Just add a little bit of water and some seeds, and this is energy. This is the energy of nature. If we don't eat it and use it to move about and hug people and love and live our lives, we shouldn't just throw it in a hole in the ground in Irvine. We should use that energy for other purposes. And our solutions of creating energy through the biogas and then putting the energy back into the earth to grow future crops is the right solution and the environmentally responsible way to manage it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. So who makes the profit then at the end?
The cost of the composting is reduced. The tipping fee that we pay Agrumen is reduced by the offset of the products that they sell in an often cases giveaway. And as part of the whole organics recycling movements, we will be wanting to increase compost giveaways in the communities that we serve, just to help educate everybody on how organics should be recycled and how they can create a value chain at the end.
So that cost savings doesn't come back to the businesses that paid for it?
It, it does in the form of reduced fees that we pay to, to, in processing and the cost of it. The same thing with...
That would keep the costs lower for them because of that?
Yes. The same with the electricity that's generated by the L.A. County Sanitation District. They're able to pass along those savings in charging us less per ton that we, we deliver to their facilities.
And you are going to be working with Orange County Sand District at some point?
Councilmember Deaton, I love that question, because to me, collecting everything in Seal Beach, taking it to Orange, and driving right past Fountain Valley with one of the most advanced wastewater treatment plants in the world, just doesn't make sense, adding to the traffic to the four-oh-five and taking it out of county. So we are hopeful that the Orange County Sanitation District will become a partner to this solution, and there's every indication that, that they are taking those steps to do that.
I think so.
You have a council member on the board.
Yeah, it's me. We're building new digesters and things to do just that, I believe. Do you have a time date at all?
We're hoping by twenty-nineteen, about thirteen months from now, when the next phase of this legislation goes into, into action. And I will tell you, the wastewater treatment plants, East Bay Mud in the San Francisco area and L.A. County Sand, they're fine, they love it, because normally what we flush down the toilet, I know this sounds kind of disgusting, but that's what they normally manage, and they recover energy from that, but that's after our bodies have already taken out most of the calories. So they are getting up to ten times more energy production from our food slurry than what they normally manage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just quickly, did I hear you correctly, you said a fifty percent in reduction of food waste?
Yes.
How do you measure that, or how, how do they measure restaurants?
So the state, great question, the Cal Recycle did what's called a waste characterization. They went to each of the landfills, spent about ten days there, and didn't let us just dump. They had us put everything on the ground, and they assessed that approximately thirty percent of the tons going into the landfills in the state is organics, food waste, green waste, wood waste. So based upon that, we know that we have about twenty million tons of organics overall going into our, our California landfills, nine million tons of food, so they're, they're going to continue to measure it through disposal at the landfill site.
Not the individual businesses, then?
They will not go to the Abbey or to Hennessy's.
Are schools required to follow this bill, too?
Fantastic questions, because school districts have been kind of their own entities outside of municipalities. There is legislation that, that just passed about two months ago that requires schools to do this, and, and it really should. Oftentimes, we're helping to fund free meals at schools, and then there's a surplus and it's not managed properly. So schools are absolutely required to participate in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Our next presentation is from Orange County Water District. Elizabeth Lam, Executive Director of Los Ritos Wetlands Trust and Eric Zahn, Principal of Title and Influence. If you'd like to step up and...
Not with the Water District, but close, the Los Ritos Wetlands Land Trust, and I'm delighted to be here with my colleague, Eric Zahn. The Los Ritos Wetlands Land Trust is an activist organization that promotes the protection and restoration of Los Ritos wetlands, and we are always looking to do more partnerships, looking to spread the good word about Los Ritos wetlands, and we thought it would be a good idea to do a, a brief report to you about the history of Los Ritos wetlands and some of the exciting work that's going out there. I want to turn the microphone over to my colleague, but I ask that you view that area with a vision for what it not only is now, but what it can be in terms of a resource for the community, important habitat, and a great outdoor classroom for our local students. for the community, important habitat and a great outdoor classroom for our local students. We're always looking for suggestions and would love to hear your feedback. But let me now turn the microphone over to my colleague and we'll take you on a little tour.
Good evening. Good to see all of you. I wanted, as Elizabeth said, give you a little natural history, an insight into some of the planning efforts that are going on currently in Los Ridos wetlands and then introduce you, if you don't already know, of some of the stewardship activities that are currently going on in Los Ridos wetlands. Historically, the San Pedro Bay from Palo Verde down to Newport Beach had quite an extensive system of coastal wetlands. You can see the many, many acres that used to exist in all those brightly colored areas overlaying over our current urban infrastructure. And over the past a hundred and twenty years or so, we've seen a dramatic loss. About twelve thousand acres or seventy-five percent of these natural habitat areas have been lost forever and just leaving small acreages that can either be restored or protected. And the main area that we're focused on Los Ridos wetlands is Alamos Bay, which historically was twenty-four hundred acres of coastal wetlands. So all that green that you see there used to all be intertidal vegetation and all the tan was mud flats and all the blue was water and you can see it overlaying over the current urban areas. And so the Los Ridos wetlands used to and still do straddle the San Gabriel River and was found in both LA and Orange Counties as well as both Seal Beach and the city of Long Beach. But what's happened over time is obviously we have all moved in in different locations, businesses, homes and the like. And what's been left as a potential restorable areas is the area outlined in red, which is approximately five hundred acres. Again, about two hundred acres in Seal Beach and about three hundred acres over in Long Beach. Everyone always loves to see some of these historical photos and I think it really demonstrates the change that has occurred over time. This is September nineteen twenty-one, looking north up the coast. You can see the old connection that used to exist on the peninsula of Long Beach over to Seal Beach right here. And they're just starting to build Naples Island and Belmont Shore is just a bunch of dredge spoils. That's why it's all white. It's all salty material that was dredged out of Alamos Bay and placed there. But then in the background, you can see all these extensive wetlands that used to exist and the city's starting to encroach upon them. A little pulled back, that same timeframe, a few months later, you can see the sleepy town of Seal Beach and really it was just, you know, the end of the line for the red car and not much, not many ways to get in and out of the town back then. But again, if you look into the distance, there's a lot of open space. Cal State Long Beach did not exist at that time and there was a great amount of wetland areas all throughout Seal Beach, actually all the way from Anaheim Bay into Alamos Bay. And then looking down the coast, you can see that same story, all this open space and especially like this one, talking about waste, this is how people used to get rid of their waste back in the old days, they would just burn it. So we're doing much better with our waste management these days. But again, some of these locations that I've been speaking of, Seal Beach, Naples and Belmont Shore, look very different. Then if you flash forward just seven years later, this is focused on the Long Beach side of things, you can see people have moved in quickly. And a lot of that's because of the infrastructure that was built for the Olympics, Marine Stadium was built for the nineteen thirty-two Olympics and that kind of started to develop the area and people moved in and started cutting away and making the roads that we are familiar with currently. If you blend that into current time, you can see we've taken over even more space over the time and really filled up the landscape completely over the past what's been a hundred years. So it's been a dramatic change, not always for the worst, but as far as the wetlands, it's greatly reduced the historic wetland footprint. And if you fast forward even to the nineteen sixties, southeast portion of Long Beach still had a good amount of open space and a lot of that was due to the oil operations. If I fast forward fifty or sixty years and you can see that even all those areas current day have been almost entirely filled in with developments, leaving just a small portion of what we call Los Ridos wetlands today. And if anyone is familiar with Colorado Lagoon, you can see that landscape has also changed as well. It used to be much more connected in and now it is much more separated. So it's always interesting to look at the ability that we have now with some of these aerial images of how things have changed over time. But what we have is what we have now. And so this is the current condition map of the Los Ridos Wetlands complex. And we definitely consider it complex because of all the different landowners. There's eleven or twelve landowners, it's constantly changing, land moving hands. But you can see all the different entities that own land in this just about five hundred acre area. But the areas that are outlined in blue are the areas that are owned either by the Los Ridos Wetlands Authority, who I'll introduce to you in a second, or the city of Long Beach. So those areas, it's total of about two hundred acres, are now in the hands of public agencies, which is wonderful. So things are starting to shift in the right direction. Several of you sitting in front of me have served either on the Wetlands Authority Board or been an alternate, so you're familiar with the Wetlands Authority. But it's just like your transit authority, any other authority in a state, it's a conglomerate of four agencies, the River to Mountains Conservancy and the State Coastal Conservancy. So it's two state agencies, plus the city of Long Beach and the city of Seal Beach. So the city of Seal Beach always has a representative on the Wetland Authorities Board and currently it's Councilmember Chief Starcik who sits on the Authorities Board representing you all. It's founded in two thousand and six and since then it's acquired a hundred and seventy acres of Los Ridos wetlands. So as I mentioned before, all these properties right here have changed hands since that time and gone into the public trust. So as we saw more land going in that direction, the Wetlands Authority made an effort to start planning for what the whole entire wetlands complex could look like one day. And this was about a four-year process that resulted not just in these three pretty pictures, but in a full report analyzing these three different alternatives. One that would be kind of working with the landscape as is, one that'd be if we had all the money in the world and no constraints, and then something in between. And this was a public process, lots of technical experts were involved and it was approved by the Wetland Authorities Board in August of two thousand and sixteen. And why I'm mentioning this is because funding has been acquired by the Wetlands Authority and a timeline has been designed to kick off the next phase in planning. So this is conceptual, the next phase is to take these concepts and turn them into one preferred alternative and then go through the sequel process and a program EIR. So that process will be kicking off in the beginning of next year and should be about a two to three-year process. We really hope that city of Seal Beach staff will help be involved because it's a big part of your city. And this is stuff that is long time, lots of funding, it's going to take a while. However, lots of the people that care about the wetlands are already doing things out there. The Los Ridos Wetlands Authority has this called their stewardship program and a variety of different groups and agencies are all a part of it, including the Los Ridos Wetlands Land Trust. And a variety of different programs are held out there, guided nature walks, bird walks, restoration events, trash cleanups, all kinds of great things. And apparently there's sea turtles in the San Gabriel River and that's a great attraction for everyone. Every third month, there's a tour to go see the turtles and the Aquatic Pacific also hosts a citizen science program that goes out and monitors these sea turtles. Now, they don't crawl out of the water, they just pop up like that, but it's still pretty awesome to see Pacific Green Sea Turtles right there in the San Gabriel River. So we trick everybody and say, come on, see the sea turtles. And then we take them out to the wetlands and teach them about stuff and have them build trails for us and things like that. But seriously though, it's wonderful that we have these youth programs and land trusts really works hard to support these. Unfortunately, a lot of them are based in Long Beach and so one of the things we're trying to do, reaching out to the council, is to try and get more Seal Beach youth out into the wetlands and involved out in the wetlands. So that's one of our priorities for twenty eighteen. But we're always offering public programs and we do know that a lot of citizens from both sides of the border are coming out and engaging in all of these different programs and activities that we have to offer. So it's not just Bolsa Chica. We have wetlands right here in your city that people can come out and enjoy. And here is us celebrating the triumphs of about a seven-year project, community-based project that just opened called Delaware Marsh Trails and it's actually on your side of the San Gabriel River, right there off the bike path. And I think you might recognize a certain someone that was there at the ribbon cutting celebrating with us. And this was great, but it also meant that we had just completed something. So now this program and all the community that's part of it is looking for something new to do. And so we've started developing a vision plan for what else the community could potentially do in the Los Ridos wetlands. Some of the stuff requires heavy lifting, some of it does not. And so we started coming together with graphics and one of the potential areas is what's called the State Lands Parcel, owned by the State Lands Commission. Right as you're going into Long Beach up Pacific Coast Highway, there's this big vacant lot. And we have a vision for making it a connection between the two cities and really cleaning up that area and having trails. So here's what it looks like right now if you're looking from PCH out towards, this is Heron Point out in the background right there. And this is what we think that it could look like one day with a little hard work and community involvement. And then we also have this wonderful area behind the homes, this is the hill right here, this is Dung Grove Park. And we have a vision of building a connector trail system that would go through here and really extend Dung Grove Park and allow more community connectedness and a nature enjoyment. And so here again, we're looking out into the distance, this is Dung Grove Park out here, this is the Boeing Development. And right now it looks like a bunch of weeds growing out in the middle of this field and we feel like it could be something, you know, really fabulous. So we're conjuring up these concepts and hoping that we can work with you and your citizens to help see them all come together. So thank you very much. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ambitious program. Any questions? Thank you very much.
I just would like to wrap up, but we're eager for feedback and partnership opportunities and we're eager to hear from you about that. I did want to acknowledge that we have a board member for our organization who lives in Seal Beach, David Mitchell, who is very interested in that same kind of outreach for us. And our outreach coordinator, Larry Toski, is also a Seal Beach resident. So we're building these relationships as much as we can because we want this area to belong to all the people who live in Seal Beach, Long Beach and the surrounding areas. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excellent program. Okay, the next is oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. And who's going to be first? All of you?
Good evening, Mayor and the city council members. I'm Dale Taylor, I'm the interim executive director of the Cypress College Foundation. And I'm here to talk about Americana, which is our Americana Community Awards Evening and we honor Citizen of the Year every year from your city as well as from seven other cities. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Cypress College before I go on, but let me first introduce our college president, our new college president, Dr. Joanna Schilling, and she'll speak to you in a minute, and the chairman of our city committee from Seal Beach. They know you, but I don't. And you probably know our honoree this year, Steve Masonner. So I'll go on and then they'll speak. Anyway, Cypress College has been named the number one community college in California and that is from the educational organization niche. It also rated Cypress College number three of two hundred and twenty-eight community colleges in the United States of our size. And we are also number twenty-seven of all community colleges in the entire United States. So that speaks pretty highly of what we do on campus. But here I want to mention Americana since that's what's coming up. The proceeds from our fundraiser make many of our educational opportunities available to students. We raise about four hundred thousand dollars, well, not all at Americana, but we do raise four hundred thousand dollars a year to give away in scholarships. And we have grants for faculty and we have emergency assistance for several, well, for students who have emergencies. And we've had a few already this year sadly. Our Americana kickoff was last Wednesday and I want to thank Councilman Moore and Councilwoman Vera Papa for being there. It was, I think it was a great event and thank you for your support at that event and for your support at Americana in the past years. Again, I mentioned Steve Masonner, I think you all know him, he's done a lot of good things right here in Seal Beach and he was instrumental in founding your city's Save Our Beach eighteen years ago. And he's continued to lead that organization both in his administrative role and his hands-on work. Also honoring this year will be our Man of the Year is Cliff Ronenberg from CRNR Recycling Services. It sounds like you have Republic in your city, not CRNR, but nonetheless, he's been a very generous man in his community and to Cypress College in the past. So we're considering, we're asking you actually to consider sponsoring a table once again at Americana at either the founder's level or the benefactor's level. And that information will be coming to you soon in the form of your invitation to the event. We're also asking you if you'd consider donating items for our live or silent auction and you've done that in the past. And you'll be getting some information on that from our Americana committee member and city councilman Ian Stanton, I think his name, David Chaver. Last year and in the past, we've given you for free a double-page ad in our beautiful Americana program. And this is your ad. Well, I lost it for a minute. Must be this way. Well, anyway, you have two pages that were done by someone in your city. Here they are, your beautiful ad, in case you didn't see it, that's your ad from last year. And so I'm going to leave it with your city clerk and then hopefully your city will get that to us very soon. Now, are you next on the agenda?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time and we have to stop.
So good evening, Council, Seth Baker, Chair of the Americana Committee for here in Seal Beach. I want to acknowledge Councilman Vera Papa, thank you for your service on the committee. And I want to thank and acknowledge all the members of the committee and also the past recipients. It's an honor and a privilege to serve on behalf of the Americana Committee. And Steve Masonner, you can come a little closer, we can be friendly, it's all right. Steve is truly an extraordinary individual. As you may or may not know, Steve founded Save Our Beach. I'm sure he'll talk a little bit about that. But he's a relentless, successful activist and community leader. He's also a well-known business person who's run a successful business in town and he is the true authentic leader in that he actually invests locally with time, talent and treasure. And he's done it year after year after year. He's also a fellow lion and so as president, current president of the lions, it's an honor and a privilege to have yet another lion be Citizen of the Year. It seems like we have people in our town who make a difference. And when I hear these presentations from Republic, which it's so great to see how though it might be challenging, there are wonderful benefits to come out of this recycling or the Los Ridos wetlands, again, something that through Steve's efforts in Save Our Beach works collaboratively to assist and develop our community and make it better. So it's so interesting that all these things intertwine. And it's my honor and privilege to introduce again, Steve Masonner, Citizen of the Year for twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Seth. It is truly an honor of mine to be, you know, given this award, but I don't take personal credit for it. There's a lot of people that I work very hard with, I have a board of directors that have made this happen. We live in a community that truly gives back to each other and that's what makes Seal Beach such a unique town. There is really no other place in the world like this, but I am honored to be honored in front of a group and a town and a city that is of that mindset. There's a huge community effort and I thank you all so much for the honor.
I forgot something too. I wanted to acknowledge all the supporters of Steve and family members who are here as well in the audience because Commander Goncheck asked me earlier, what are all these people here for? Americana, don't worry, it's not typically why everybody's in here. So it's wonderful. And our president.
Very briefly, I just wanted to thank the council for your support of Cypress
Very briefly, I just wanted to thank the council for your support of Cypress College and also to congratulate Mr. Masonner on this honor. What we think is kind of unique about Americana is that it is a fundraiser for the college, but it is a way for us to give back to the community and to honor your exemplary citizens. So we think it's a win-win for everybody, and we hope that you will be there. You know, many of our students, it seems remarkable, we live here in Orange County, we have comfortable lives, but many of our students, their only path to an education and an economic future is through the community college. And we have been able to provide thousands of dollars to our students each year, students who would not be able to stay in college without your support. So we thank you, and we hope we will see you there in February. And we think it's going to be a great night. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening, council members. My name is Shannon Switzer, and I'm here on behalf of the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce this evening. Just here to remind the entire community of some upcoming events. This weekend, with the generous support of the city of Seal Beach, the Chamber of Commerce has its annual Christmas tree lighting. So this Saturday, between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. down at Eisenhower Park, near, next to the pier, is the Christmas tree lighting. We have all kinds of goodies. There's real snow, Santa, music, all kinds of great things for kids and the family. So please, if you're in the community, take time to come on out and join us. We also have an annual ornament that's made of glass to commemorate the city of Seal Beach that we sell each year on behalf of the chamber. So for anyone who's interested, we will have those at the lighting. And they're also on several businesses up and down Main Street, restaurants like The Abbey, all kinds of places. So Knock Knock, Harvey Girls, all kinds of goodies. So keep an eye out for those as well. And then lastly, for our members of the community who are interested, anyone who does not have an opportunity to be with friends or family this Thanksgiving, the Chamber of Commerce is putting on its annual Thanksgiving Day Dinner. And that is held at St. Anne's Church, just off 10th Street and Pacific Coast Highway. Anyone in the community is welcome. We have some games starting about 11:00 a.m., and dinner is served at 12:00. We also have an opportunity for those who are not mobile and would like to have somebody pick them up. We have chamber members volunteering to do that as well. So just contact us at the Chamber of Commerce office. We're happy to make those arrangements. So if any of those items are available to you, please come down and join us, all the members of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon. Next speaker. Next speakers. World.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Tom Parker, and this is my wife.
Jenna Lenquist.
Parker.
Oh, little tension here.
No, not at all. But we are here with a little bit of a frustration. Last December, we received a notice that our fence that's been in place for 33 years on the corner of Landing and 15th Street was questionably high. And so we came in and talked to staff and explained the fact that it was, had been there for 33 years since 1984. And that it was only there with a little bit of extra height, about 12 inches of extra height because of the fact that the city approved a lot split on the lot that was directly across Landing, converting a, give those to city clerk, converting a standard lot 37 and 1/2 wide by 100 feet deep into two 50-foot lots. And with the front lot on 15th Street facing 15th Street and the back 50 feet facing across Landing into, right into our backyard. And so we explained all this when we came in last December, when we first were notified of this, and discussed it with staff, the neighborhood specialist, and her boss. And then was directed to go out, who came out with this and measured the fence. And under the circumstances, said it shouldn't be a problem. You know, it's been here for so long. We have taken great pride in our property and maintain and upgrade it all the time. And we didn't care anything further from last December 2016 until just this November. And then we were notified again that it was a problem. And we called City Hall here in Seal Beach. Jenna called the acting interim.
Director.
Director.
Which. Phil Anson.
Anyway, called two times and asked for a return call, never received anything. And then called the actual new neighborhood services officer, and he didn't respond either. Finally, on a third call, he did call back to Jenna and.
Oh, I called, got him in his office.
Okay. In any case, then I subsequently called two more times over the past couple of days. And this has been going on for quite a long time now with no response from staff. We just asked to come in and re-explain everything and the fact that this fence, although high, has been there for 33 years, taken care of. And the reason it's there is because of the back half of the split lot looks right into the backyard and provides some privacy for our tenants. So at this point, I think with the exception of anything Jenna has further to say, I would like to request that this be referred to the city manager and that it be reviewed with staff. And please give some consideration to grandfathering of this because of the fact that it's been in place and taken care of very well for 33 years. And I guess that's about all we have to say. Any questions?
Sir, if I could just ask if you leave your contact information with the city clerk, and I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, city of Seal Beach, council members, some of you whom I have met before. My name is Anna Christensen. I live in Long Beach. I'm here tonight about the Los Cerritos Wetlands. I represent one group in particular, the Long Beach Area Peace Network. Some of our members, Peter Rosenwald, for example, does live in Seal Beach in leisure world. And we helped organize a little demonstration, you might have read about it, in the Seal Beach Sun. A coalition of organizations, including ourselves as well as Long Beach 350, Progressive Environmental 99%, Stop Fracking Long Beach, the California Cultural Resources Preservation Alliance, Coalition to Protect Ponhe, Rebecca Robles, a hachiman, leader of that group, are organized because we're extremely concerned about a new oil drilling project that is making its way through the city of Long Beach. And may not come before the Seal Beach, but will have a huge effect on your community. And we don't want you to be left out of the loop. The packet that I gave you tonight has some information about it. We also created a little Facebook page for just focused on this oil drilling project. Another thing that came before Long Beach, also not in Seal Beach, was our rezoning from Seadip to Seacip. And we opposed that as well because we didn't feel that it was good for the wetlands and our community, our residents in that part of town were opposed to it. And you may be aware of the major outrage of citizens over rezoning in high density in general without their knowledge or awareness. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not, there's no blame here. It's very difficult to educate. I was a teacher, high school teacher for 20 years, you know, and I had kids, which then you really get the challenge. But, you know, it can be done. And that's, we are on a steep learning curve here. You saw Mr. Zahn's presentation about, in just 100 years. And we have lost, our local wetlands, we've lost more than 90% of, we've lost more wetlands in California than any other state has lost, almost all of them, 95%. We've also lost along the coast most of the evidence that native people ever lived here. Again, I was here, maybe you don't remember Mr. Mola, but I remember him quite well. And I spent about a year coming to see city council meetings with a distinguished elder Vera Rocha, the Gavirino tribe. Basically, on our, you know, the community valued the wetlands. And Mr. Mola, everybody ate his hot dogs. And then goodbye, Mr. Mola. The community itself heard, and the community was allowed to hear. That's what I really respect about Seal Beach. That went up for a vote, as I recall. And the community voted to save the wetlands. They didn't want to go, of course. They wanted their wetlands. And now we have them. We have them to move forward. But we don't, Heron Point got built, and as we said, there were burials, you know. So now what Rebecca Robles, the Coalition for Ponhe, asked of the city of Long Beach in response to the rezoning, and again, in terms of this project, is leave it in the ground. It's very much the same thing that 350.org and other organizations are saying about oil. It's time to leave it in the ground, especially in areas that are so fragile that we have so little of, such as wetlands.
One minute, please.
Okay. So the card I didn't give you is the card that the company, Beach Oil Mineral Partners, is distributing all over Long Beach in community meetings. If you haven't yet had a presentation by them, I'm sure you will soon. And this is greenwashing on steroids. Greenwashing is not just a word or a joke. It is a strategy that has been employed ever since Rachel Carson wrote Silent Spring. It is an advertising agency strategy to make, to make a project that has a negative effect on the environment look like it has the opposite. And so this company says they have a vision for generations and creating a sanctuary for the community. You will see our oil washing of their greenwashing with the birds drenched in oil. And all I want to say, and I know there's several other groups here today, is that Beach Oil Mineral Partners, Los Cerritos Wetlands, and Restoration and Oil Consolidation Project is neither. And the LCWA Board, of which you have a vote on, should not be a partner in a project that will add 200 million barrels of oil to our environment. And Coastal Commission does cause it an expansion. I used up my time. Okay, thank you very much.
I did not receive a copy of what you mentioned you left us.
Yeah, I gave about five, there were five. I'm sorry.
Mayor Masalava, she did provide the five packets, and I'll make sure it gets into your mail.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, should have brought more. Sorry.
May I ask a question, please? Yes. Did you say that you opposed the new Seacip?
We do. We oppose it, but we're not here tonight about Seacip. But the Long Beach Area Peace Network and Rebecca Robles, many people oppose the Seacip rezoning because of the density it adds, the high-rise buildings, seven-story buildings, five-story, virtually a wall between the wetlands and the beach. Low-flying birds, Audubon. And also the Los Cerritos Wetlands Land Trust is now suing, the group that presented before, the Los Cerritos Wetlands Land Trust is suing the city of Long Beach over Seacip rezoning because of its negative impact on the wetlands.
Okay, so, okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Steve Brothers. I'm with the ACT Now Coalition, which stands for Act Now, Stop War and Racism. We also are concerned about environmental issues and native rights issues. And the Cerritos Wetland project entails both. So I wanted to speak about a couple of things that weren't covered in the slide presentation earlier. I think we can all agree that it sounds wonderful to regenerate the wetlands and restore them to some semblance of their past glory. But there's another side to that, which was not covered in the presentation earlier. So I'll address a few of those points. It's always hard to know how to approach something like this. I don't want to like have people's eyes rolled back in their head with a bunch of facts and figures from the environmental impact report or anything like that. So I'm going to try to be more concise and focus on bullet points and recent periodicals and go from there. But first of all, let me just present some facts, sort of a bullet point format. First of all, the pumpkin patch, which you all know. This new project entails drilling 50 new wells there and construction and operation of oil production facilities, including two storage tanks as well as related systems and equipment, also the use of drill rigs to establish new wells and to maintain existing wells. The LCWA spot, which is nearby, they want to do 70 new wells there, 7-0-70. They want to construct associated oil production equipment, including an elevated pipe track, a 28,000-barrel sales oil tank, a 5,000-barrel injection water tank, two 14,000-barrel multi-use tanks, and a 20-to-25-foot high flare to be used only occasionally. They also want to use drill rigs to establish new wells and to maintain existing wells. So that is what the petrol developers would like to do in the wetlands. So as you also are no doubt aware, the Newport Inglewood Fault runs right through the wetlands. It's a very serious geological fault. And now I'm going to cite a few recent articles that have to do with that. First up is an article from the Los Angeles Times, which appeared on October 1st, 2016. The article is called "Southern California's Deadliest Quake May Have Been Caused By Oil Drilling," study says. So this, of course, refers to the Long Beach earthquake of 1933. It is California's deadliest earthquake to date, and it was an estimated 6.4 magnitude quake. So a quote from the article in LA Times of October 31st, 2016. "And this study suggests that the quake may have been caused by another factor, deep drilling in an oil field in Huntington Beach. The study, written by two leading U.S. geological survey scientists in Pasadena and to be published in the Bulletin of the Seismological Society of America on Tuesday, also suggests that three other earthquakes, including a magnitude-five earthquake in 1920 in Inglewood and a 1929 whittier earthquake, may also be linked to oil drilling." Now I'm going to skip to another article, which appeared in the New York Times on March 27th, 2017. The article was titled "A 7.4 Quake in Southern California: A Long Fault Could Make It Likelier." The notable quote from this article says, "The idea that the Newport-Inglewood Fault could produce more powerful earthquakes than what happened in 1933 has been growing over the decades. Scientists have come to the conclusions that the Newport-Inglewood Fault could link up with the San Diego County Coast Rose Canyon Fault, producing a theoretical 7.5 earthquake based on the length of the combined fault system."
One minute, please.
If you're on the west side of LA, it's probably the fastest-moving big earthquake that you're going to have locally. A seven on the Newport-Inglewood is going to be a lot more damage than an eight on the San Andreas Fault. Skipping quickly to an LA Times article on March 21st, 2017, titled "Notorious LA Quake Fault: More Dangerous Than Experts Believed, New Research Shows." I think this would be most notable and sort of impressive to the citizens of Seal Beach. Quote, "A new study has uncovered evidence that major earthquakes on the fault centuries ago were so violent that they caused a section of Seal Beach near the Orange County coast to fall one and a half to three feet in a matter of seconds." One and a half to three feet in a matter of seconds in an earthquake. So suffice to say, I know that the council members have a lot of say in this matter, some of you more than others for sure. And you have a lot of power. So I hope that you all consider this issue, the repercussions, seismologically speaking. And, you know, you have the opportunity perhaps to have a real impact with saving an entire ecosystem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions? Questions?
Hi, my name is Ashenah Christensen, and I'm a citizen of Long Beach. I'm also with the Protect the Wetlands group as well. I just wanted to start out by thanking you for allowing us to have a voice here. And to acknowledge that we're on Tongva and Ahshun land. I'm an indigenous person. And I just think that, you know, it's really important for people to have consultation with the native peoples of this land. So. So, you know, we're working with the local Tongva and Ahshun elders to address the oil drilling issue. And we have other means of stopping the project, like, you know, the fact that the state law requires tribal consultation and notice in a timely fashion. So we're hoping that, you know, you'll be on the right side when it comes to it. If this project goes to the California Coastal Commission, you know, there are other issues at stake, like the loss of tribal sovereignty. And these lands here, the wetlands, are this particular place where they want to do the drilling and restore the wetlands are, it was an ancient community called Montecheno of the Tongva land. And they have, you know, they've found bodies all over this cultural sacred landscape. Pavona, Gum Grove, you know, Honem Ranch. And so, it's very likely they'll uncover secret artifacts and remains if they do more digging and construction. So I just want to be a voice for those people to say that, you know, this is, like, we're still here, and we care about our, we still practice our culture. I'm not Tongva, but, you know, I work with the community. I attend some of their ceremonies. And there's not a Tongva person here to speak on their behalf, so I'm here to speak for them. And I just want you to reconsider, like, the greenwashing that's going on with the coastal, with the Los Cerritos Wetlands Authority, because in their presentation, they could even mention their project as involving the Beach Oil Mineral Partners. So, you know, I think that's just like misleading in itself, that there's nothing mentioned that they're partnering with an oil company to do the land swap. So I hope you don't buy into it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Everett Gantz, resident of Signal Hill. And I'm, excuse me, I'm here on behalf of the Los Cerritos Wetlands. For a number of years, my wife and I lived in Marina Pacifica, which is just down the street from the wetlands and across the street from the now demolished hotels. We're pretty familiar with the territory, and especially with Signal Hill and Seal Beach and Long Beach. We, I think, I look upon it as all as a community. And I'm grateful to have the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of the wetlands. They're not making any more of them. As you can see, we just have a scrap of them left as it is. And, you know, I do not envy you the pressure you're going to be seeing, if you haven't already, from the oil giants. There's a reason why the place looks the way it does now. It didn't used to. My late wife and I were somewhat involved in the efforts on behalf of Bosa Chica when they were suffering a similar experience. In that particular case, it had to do with housing, again, an insatiable demand. And I, I'm sure you're all aware of what's been going on in Hollywood and nation's capital as far as careers crashing suddenly of people who spent years and decades building them up. But there's something important about being on the right side of history. So while these people are suffering consequences of things that happened decades ago, they probably just don't understand that. And I'm just grateful that we have adults in the room here who appreciate the reality of the world in which we live. There are people here tonight who were at Standing Rock in North Dakota and a company of other passive demonstrators who were being assaulted by men in uniform with guns who were spraying them in zero-degree weather with water, and it wasn't to keep them warm. So you can appreciate the forces that are put here. And again, I'm just grateful that you're involved. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
My name's Virginia Vicford. I'm here representing the California Cultural Resource Preservation Alliance and representing myself as a nearby resident. I live just up the road in Los Alamitos, actually about 50 feet from the Seal Beach city line. I'm really concerned, I was asked to consult with the Native Americans from this area on the proposed land swap and increased oil drilling originally. I'm an archaeologist, and this is, there is a application to be recognized as cultural landscape. As you all know, this whole area was very important to the Native Americans. However, as I looked into their proposed changes, I became alarmed on behalf of myself as a citizen of the area. And the proposed switch of polluted, currently polluted lands with very little mitigation for pristine lands, which, as I understand, if I understand correctly, were originally set aside as compensation for doing something else, polluted lands in another area, to exchange polluted land for pristine land and then open the waters to the polluted land to naturally wash out the pollutants over a period of 40 years, which will pollute the rest of the area. It doesn't make sense. And I am extremely concerned about the oil drilling, which also doesn't make sense in this location in the middle of a densely inhabited area. I hope you will look very carefully at the Environmental Impact Report that I understand will be coming out sometime in December, and that you will reject the idea of supporting this land swap and the increased oil drilling in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert Goldberg, City of Long Beach. I'd like to speak tonight regarding item G, which is the supplemental police officer staffing and funding. Yesterday, I did send to the council and staff some questions and comments regarding this, and I'm just going to try to summarize those, if I may, in my five minutes. I did have a couple of questions to begin. The first had to do with a statement in the first paragraph of the staff report. It says that, "Over the last four years, the revenues for the city have declined." And I don't quite understand the basis for this statement, because in reviewing the budgets from the last four years, the revenue for the city's general fund, which is where the money for police officers comes from, four years ago in fiscal 1415 was 29.1 million. And for this year, that's gone up over a million to $30.2 million, which is an increase of about 1.1 million over the last four years. So I'm not clear on what the basis was for the statement that our revenues have dropped in the last four years. The second question I had is that the report asks for a budget amendment to fund two police officers for a full 12 months, which is about $359,000. And that's a budget amendment to move money from our swimming pool reserve fund into the police salary fund. What I don't understand is that we only have seven months left in the year hiring these two police officers. Unless they're ready to go immediately, it probably won't happen until January. And so, really, the money that we need to hire two officers should really be six months' salary, maybe seven months' salary, which is a lot less than $359,000. Seven months' salary would be about $209,000. The third comment is that the proposal before you, which is to use reserve money to fund salaries, has basically been presented to you, I think, at least once, if not twice. And both times, the council has been concerned, and I think rightfully concerned, that an organization, whether you're a business or a government, should not be funding ongoing staff and salaries with reserve money, one-time money. And that's a basic concept, that one-time money should go for one-time projects, like bridges and buildings, and that ongoing expenses, like salaries, should come from ongoing revenue. And so, council has correctly been concerned about that in prior presentations. Now, I understand the need for these police officers. We are in the midst of a bit of a crime wave here. And so, I thought I would take a stab at going through the budget and seeing if I could come up with the $200,000 or $300,000 from operating revenue, operating funds. And so, the budget is very tight, and I think I came close, perhaps. The problem is, is that this is, what I'm proposing requires sacrifices on lots of different parties. And basically, to generate the money for the next seven months, which is $209,000, we'd have to do three things. One is that the council would have to give up their district discretionary funds. Each council person gets $20,000, a total of $100,000. That would have to be transferred to the police salary. Next, some approximately $100,000 from four different departmental accounts for contractors, contract professional accounts, would also have to be transferred to police salaries. One minute, please. This is money that I think has been there, is put there for what's called budget flexibility, but that would have to go. And then, finally, the council would have to counsel the next strategic objectives retreat, which would save about $6,000. That happens every six months. We'd have to go to a one-year schedule. The total of that would be about $208,000, which would fund these officers for the rest of fiscal year. Now, what about next year? Well, next year, things would get a bit harder to come up with a full $359,000. And that's the second page of my handout. And that would take some negotiation with some stakeholders to do three things. One is that we'd have to negotiate with the Police Officers Union for the members of the police officer class, which is about 18 people, to forego their cost of living increase retroactive to last July. The Class Comp Study that you'll be talking about found that our police officers are paid about 8.7% higher than the median, so there's some room for negotiation there. Number two is we currently fund a quarter of a police officer through Los Alamitos PD for the Los Angeles High School. We started that in 2013, when the high school was cash-strapped and we wanted to help out with a quarter officer. Well, we're cash-strapped now, and I think we should ask whether perhaps that money could come back, and perhaps the school district could fund it on their own. And number three is I think we should look at our pension obligation bond and see if that could be refunded. Those three things would generate another $149,000. Thank you for your time.
George Ross Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. I'm here tonight also. I was a member of the Bosa Chica Amigos when they got the Bosa Chica wetlands preserved over there at Huntington Beach and got the bridge, opened the ocean up so that there was that little island for the birds. It was very nice. I hope they can do the same. And there is an election coming up next year, so I said I would be here until that time comes, talking about pensions, crime, Main Street graffiti, the bonds, the buses on Main Street are taking up four spaces. And I'm also here to represent the nonconforming people that have nonconforming property in Seal Beach. When I came here in 1969, it's the same thing that you're trying to push on us again. There were older properties, and you were not allowed to touch them. We don't want you around us. So when the big L-Nio came in 1982, a lot of people couldn't get along on their property because of the city council didn't want nonconforming old properties. So, but they had to change that, because a lot of properties got hurt with the 1982 L-Nio. I am a nonconforming property owner, and I know a lot of them in town. And so, they had to change the rules. And that's when a lot of people worked on their nonconforming property, but a lot of them were torn down. On Mr. Erickson. Mr. Erickson built a lot of four units, a lot of two units, and then he had to go to single-family homes. Those single-family homes, at one time, had open space between the house and the garage. And at one time, if you remember, Hillary, you didn't like those units next to you housing tenants. And you asked the attorney, Gwen, Gwen, not this one, if you could make it a limit on how many tenants could live in those nonconforming units. And he said, "No." "No." You remember that?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, I don't remember this either, because in January 23, 2017, I wasn't, I was doing something else. I don't remember this either, where you don't want to abide by the new California code. You don't want to abide by the new California code, because you don't want nonconforming units around you. If you don't have nonconforming units, you don't have Main Street. Nobody would be on Main Street. None of you have been on Main Street. You don't know how filthy dirty it is, and we've got the parade coming up. None of you. So I've been reading this, and I'm going to read more. And there, there's going to have to be some changes. I don't know if you want to change them, or if the new people coming in are going to change them, but there's going to have to be changes so that people can have a bathroom. I went through that new duplex over there on 12th Street, and I'm shocked at what you will let me provide in town, only because, and I think it would you, Hillary, that you changed open space to balconies and decks, roof decks. There's no open space in any of these buildings that are going up. None.
One minute, please.
One minute. Okay. I wanted to also, we've got the young people here tonight, I want to talk about two words. And if they can look them up and decide if they're good or they're bad. Freeloader. Freeloader. Young people, you need to learn that word. Find out where it came from. A gadfly. Young people, you need to learn that word, and where did it come from? And you're going to have to go back into some Greek history to learn about that. Is it good or is it bad? Those two words, I will come back up next time, and we will discuss them. But in the meantime, the wellness program that you approved, that you approved a wellness program when we were broke. And so, what happens? The assistant city manager, he goes out and he buys an Apple Watch for $442.11, and we're broke? And we're going to put another bond issue up to the people? What's the bond going to cover? Your salary again? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers this evening? Okay. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 20 minutes to nine. We'll be back at 20 minutes to nine. We're going to get started again. Can we have the city attorneys' report?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, prior to the meeting this evening, the council at 5:30 met in closed session regarding the two items on the posted agenda. All council members were present, and the council took no reportable action on either item.
Thank you. City manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish the council, the community, and staff, since this is our last council meeting prior to Thanksgiving holiday, just to wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving holiday, especially since our next meeting won't be until next month. That's all I have.
Thank you. And council comments. Can we start with Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, I went on another tour of the main facilities to look at the water damage. I did see a need there to do something. We had a rash of car break-ins in College Park West a few weeks ago. I'd just like to thank the police for responding to those and posting a sign outside College Park West, reminding residents to lock their car doors. And that just kind of reaffirms, I think, that we need to do something with the increase in crime, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sastarsik.
Good evening. This, last week I went to, maybe it was two weeks ago, the, I'm losing track. I went to MODOC, the Metropolitan Water District of Orange County. They had a seminar for elected officials and gave an update on the California Water Fix, the Twin Towers Project. Apparently, there's a little bit of snag there and support and stuff, and they're hopeful that it'll get moving to provide more reliable water for us in Southern California. So, very interesting. Thank you.
Councilmember Deaton.
Yes, hello. Good evening. I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and just piggyback on what Shannon said about our Thanksgiving dinner here in Old Town. One of the great things that the Chamber helps put on, and it gives everyone a place to go, including our people from Leisure World, who they are happy to bring in by bus, I mean by car, sorry, by helpers. I have a couple of things here. I would like to first of all, address something that Ms. Parquet said because she attributed it to me personally, and I'm not sure exactly what she was talking about, but I want to be very, very clear that I love our non-conformings, and I love our tenants, because one of the things that make Old Town, Old Town, is the woof and the warp of all the different people that live here. And without our Main Street, and without our tenants, we would just be another suburb along the coast, and we aren't. We are really different, and we have really unique people, and we're really fun to be with each other because we're not looking at each other being exactly the same people. So I just want to be sure, because some things were attributed to me, I'm not sure where they came from, but that's not me. I love our tenants, and I think our non-conformings actually is what helps to keep the village. So that, I wanted to be sure and clarify that. Next, I would like to request that our staff work with Surfside Homeowners Association to realign our code with theirs. For some reason, they've grown apart in the years, and what's actually de facto in Surfside isn't de facto in our code. So I would like to be sure that the staff works with them to get things aligned. And is that all I need to do on that, is to ask for that time?
Yes, and it would, since it would be a potential zoning code amendment, it would need to go as a recommendation before the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the council.
Okay, and I want to be sure that they are not charged fees for it because this actually is a joint problem we've got going on. It's not, it's not their fault. So, okay, so that's one. And then the second, I'd like some clarification from our goal-setting session to find out when we are addressing oil revenue and when we will actually see a contract that we might be able to get going on that.
Yes, so I was going to address that in my review of that item, but we are, I believe, so our goal on achieving short-term and long-term fiscal sustainability, the number-one objective on recommending the Council for Action of Hiring Qualified Professional, to rewrite the municipal code with the intention of recovering gas and oil revenue, is determined at the strategic planning meeting that we would bring that before this body at the December 11th council meeting prior to the end of the year.
Is that only to rewrite the code?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right. So would that entail recovery?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to mention I attended the Americana Awards kickoff last week in Stanton. It was nice to kind of sit down and talk to Mr. Masoner. He has a lot of information and really provides a great service for the city, and I recommend, if you haven't done that, beach cleanup on a Saturday, third Saturday of the month, to, you know, try to attend it. I try to go every so often with my kids, and we have a good time cleaning up trash, believe it or not, but it's actually a challenge because we make it, you know, kind of a game who can collect the most. So I do a plan on attending the awards banquet in February, and looking forward to a nice Thanksgiving. I will be at St. Anne's. Been there the last couple of years, usually go early to help set up, and then I head out of town. So, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
And I don't have anything to report. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving, and I hope you all enjoy your time and hope that you're with your families. Okay, we're on to council items, and item A is the City of Seal Beach Strategic Plan. Can we have a report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just want to briefly summarize this item. As all of you know, we met on October 18th to review progress made on the last six-month objectives and reevaluate our three-year goals. Our three-year goals did remain the same. I want to thank the council again, as I always do, for your ongoing leadership in terms of this effort, and the significance it has in terms of our progress moving forward and our vision for the future. As you'll note, we've always had six months in terms of working towards these objectives, and this time, what we're doing is we've scheduled the next strategic planning meeting for April, which means we have now basically less than five months to try to get six months' worth of work in. And the reason for that is we need to get the next strategic planning meeting and to determine if there's any strategic plan objectives or goals that change because we use this in terms of a foundation for our budget. And since we'll already be working on our budget, or prior to that, we want to make sure we have time to make any revisions to the draft budget, so that's why we're meeting a little bit earlier than we normally would in the spring. But just quickly, want to walk you through each page and just highlight a couple of things. On our first Um, on our first, uh, goal area, on providing a quality beach and pier environment, including a restaurant, just wanna note on there, Objective Number Two, about securing outside agency permits for the pier construction project, that our staff will be providing ongoing updates about the pier project on the city's website, so we'll be implementing that soon. Uh, Page B, on achieving short- and long-term fiscal sustainability, um, as you note, um, Objective Two, in terms of recommending to the council options for new revenue sources, we have highlighted that effort as well. Uh, and one of our items tonight that we'll be coming up with in reference to supplemental, uh, police department funding. On Page C, which is improving and maintaining our infrastructure and facilities, uh, we have an item that's, uh, before you tonight, which is a scope of service for your review on a long-term citywide landscape maintenance contract, so that's before you tonight. And then, um, on Page D, attracting, developing, compensating, and retaining quality staff. Objective Two, we have before you tonight, uh, the results of the class and comp study along the consultants here tonight who facilitated, facilitated this effort on behalf of the city. Um, this is a receive-and-file item for you tonight. And then finally, on Page E, which is enhancing public safety, as you know, we have, um, Objective Number One, uh, recommendation from staff before you tonight, to increase staffing by two officers to enhance public safety. And so, um, with that, as you know, on a monthly basis, uh, the staff does bring this to you, this matrix to you, so that we can hold ourselves accountable, uh, and report progress that we've made on these individual objectives, uh, and staff can address questions. And so, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions the council has at this time.
Are there any questions from the council? Okay, this is a recommendation for receive-and-file, so we will do that. And the next item on the agenda is a class and compensation study. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I'll turn this item over to Patrick, Patrick Iago, Sir Assistant City Manager. And as I mentioned, uh, we have our, um, consultant who facilitated this effort, who's here tonight to make a presentation and address any count, uh, questions the council might have. Patrick?
Uh, thank you, uh, City Manager Ingram, and good evening, members of the City Council and Mayor. Um, tonight, we asked of the City Council, receiving file, uh, the final report of the classification and compensation study, uh, completed by Coffin and Associates. Uh, we also have, as, uh, City Manager Ingram mentioned, we have, uh, Gayor Kramer, the Chief Executive Officer for Coffin and Associates, uh, to present tonight, uh, the final study for your consideration.
Good evening, I'm Adam, Mayor, council members. It's my pleasure to be back, uh, to present the, uh, final, uh, report of the classification compensation study that Coffin Associates, um, conducted for the city. Let me see if I can figure out the clicker here. Um, I'll write to the agenda, I'll try to, uh, generally keep the presentation short and then, and, um, then open it up for any questions that you may have. Um, so I'll talk a little bit about the, uh, overall methodology of the class and comp studies, uh, get right into the study results and recommendations. And then, uh, as it's been mentioned, uh, this is, um, a, a receive-and-file sort of, sort of item, uh, is what I typically find, um, governing bodies do. Um, a couple of things I wanted to mention before I get into my presentation is that, uh, there are some, um, in the review of our report, there is some feedback that we received regarding the data and questions that we're, uh, that we've responded to, um, that led to a, a few minor corrections that we're going to make. So, there's a, going to be an, um, uh, a, um, amended report that's going to be, uh, presented to the city, but, uh, but as I said, the, the, uh, corrections that we're making are not substantial and, uh, they are not going to impact our recommendations. Our recommendations, while this study was a total compensation study, uh, our recommendations were, uh, based on, uh, the base salary survey results of, of the study, and I'll, I'll go into a little bit more detail as to why that is. Um, let's see, another, uh, concept I wanted to reiterate, and you'll see that in the report as well, is, is, and that came out of some of the questions that we received regarding the report, is that when we do a study like this, it is a snapshot in time. And the data collection for the compensation survey, for example, actually occurred early this year, at the beginning of the year, through March. And I say that because, um, data such as compensation data is, is fluid and it changes over time. And so, we create the snapshot in time and at one point essentially draw the line to say, as of this date, that this is the most current, uh, information that we were able to get our hands on. And as time goes on, especially as we enter new fiscal year, often data changes and, um, agencies, uh, implement cost-of-living adjustments, and there may be other changes that occur that you may not find in our report because the report is based on data collected up to March of 2017. So, I wanted to point that out as well. And, um, uh, the last point, as sort of part of this introduction, is that, uh, our reports are typically used as a tool for the organization to use, uh, as a baseline to make decisions. Obviously, you're not going to, um, approve all of the recommendations inside of our report tonight, uh, but simply accept our, our report as a tool, and that's also an important fact, factor of this, this process to point out. With that, I'll go right to the, um, uh, job classification study methodology. Um, it was a quite extensive process. I'll summarize that, um, we came in and we conducted orientation meetings with employees to explain the process. Uh, pretty much all employees of the organization completed what we call position description questionnaires, uh, describing the duties and responsibilities that they perform. Uh, we came back and sat down with employees or, and/or groups of employees, supervisors and managers to discuss these, uh, position description questionnaires and ensure, to ensure that we had a full understanding of the body of work that's, that was being performed by each employee here. And from that, um, derived our recommendations for job classification, uh, titles, for this overall classification plan structure, um, and, and finally updated, um, and developed the city's classification descriptions, or what we sometimes just call job descriptions. Um, what our recommendations ended up with is that we recommended nineteen title changes for seventeen classifications, basically making sure that the, the title recognizes the scope and level of work performed. Um, examples for, uh, our recommendations would include, for example, the, um, Senior Community Services Officer job classification, uh, is one where we recommended to essentially sort of break it apart and create a detention officer, uh, create a police records technician. Uh, that's an example of, of, of a title change that we made. Um, we also recommended seventeen reclassifications, uh, again, looking at the body of work being performed and recognizing that the person doing the job is basically, that the job may have changed or morphed over time that, um, took the essential functions of the work outside of the current job classification. So, we felt that reclassifying, uh, the position and the person in the position to a different, uh, job classification was appropriate. Um, and, and we do that, um, obviously to, uh, not only recognize scope and level of work performed, but also making sure that we bring our experience, uh, about industry standards and best practices to, to the organization. Typically, the difference between title changes and reclassifications is that a title change, uh, when we, when we recommend a title change, we typically don't, um, e- expect direct compensation impact. Um, so it's sort of a lateral change, if you will. A reclassification is typically something where we expect that there may be, uh, impact on the, on the compensation. So, so it could be an upgrade or, uh, uh, sometimes a downgrade. Uh, so that's the difference between these two concepts. Getting right to the compensation study, uh, you probably, um, remember a couple of our, um, discussions regarding the agencies that we're going to survey. I have a slide on that in, in just a second. Um, the second survey element that, uh, we, uh, there was discussion around with the city, was to determine which classifications to actually go out and survey. Uh, so this is a pretty typical benchmarking process that we, that we do. And then the third element was to determine or, or agree upon which benefits, uh, elements to survey. Um, let's see, this is the slide on, um, just to, as a quick reminder, as, as to the agencies that we ended up surveying. Um, now move right along here. Uh, once those three survey elements are agreed upon, you would likely fall behind the market further. So, something to think about as well. And with that, I, I would open it up to any questions that you may have. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one other item that I forgot to mention. I have it in my T-shirt down here, uh, and my screen went dark on me. Um, was that in looking at the survey results, uh, one of the things that I know we discussed in determining comparator agencies was to look at other agencies that had marine safety. And, and while we were able to identify some, um, not every agency structured the same way. So, one of the outcomes was that for the marine safety officer, we ended up not being able to obtain sufficient market data. Um, our, our minimum requirement is at least four data points, and we were able to obtain three. So, uh, what you'll find in the report is that we did obtain market data for the, uh, marine safety chief, and we can actually build recommendations, uh, based on internal alignments, um, based on those data points that we do have. So, I just wanted to point that out as, as a side note. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Deaton?
I have a few. Um, thank you. Thank you for your work. I appreciate it. It is very, um, complex. It is a fluid document. It is a, a moving target, if you will. I have a few questions. Uh, first, I would like to know, um, you said that we are a little bit retirement poor, I mean, a little bit benefit poor unless you, uh, take out those that, uh, don't receive benefits. It seems that that would be the way to go, is to take that out. Because if they don't receive benefits, then why are we comparing them to people that receive benefits? Because they, their job doesn't get benefits. So, I don't quite understand why we put that in. But, uh, what I'd really like to discuss is can we remove the retirement benefits from the comparatives? And the reason I say that is this. We, as a city, have worked very, very hard to get pension reform. And pension reform has been a major goal of ours. And therefore, um, I just believe that that needs to come out because what we've tried to find are other benefits that would take that place so that, in the long term, the city remains financially stable. So, what would happen if you took the retirement benefits out? For instance, fifty percent of the comparators offer enhanced formula. In this day's climate, knowing where pensions are going, that's untenable. So, I don't think that that should be something we're comparing. Thirty-three percent pay all or a portion of major of member contributions. That was a significant thing that we did in bargaining one year, was to get them to pay their part and we pay their part instead of the city paying both parts. Uh, and twenty-five percent pay social security. Pensions are gonna kill us, they're gonna break us, and if we don't do something fiscally responsible with retirement benefits, nobody'll get a retirement benefit. And then, the comparator would be really interesting. So, what I'd really like to see is how do we line up if you take the retirement benefits out of the benefit package? Okay, that's one. Um, then I wanna have a discussion on total comp versus base salary. Really, what I'm interested in is total comp. I define total comp as total comp. Um, yet, when I look at the different things that we have and don't have in total comp, for instance, let's just talk longevity pay, um, we don't have longevity pay in there as a comparator factor, um, so you don't really have total comp at that point. And now, I don't know what I'm, what I'm comparing. So, that's number two. Number three, you found that our police officers were, um, a little high in their, uh, median class. Um, what I would like to suggest is that we perhaps start a new classification, number one, called Police Recruit, and then move to Police Officer One, Two, and Three. And I think that does a few things. It allows us to bring the incoming police officers in at a more comparable rate, and it allows for promotion within the rank of the actual officer on the street, if you will, and allow them to make movement. Because right now, if you're a police officer, you'd, you're either a police officer or you've been promoted. And so, I'd like to find a way to actually put promotion into Officer One, Two, and Three, and maybe make, say, Police Officer Three to be equivalent to what we get now with a matrix of, um, a combination maybe of, uh, passing probation, time served in the position, uh, continuing education, something like that to move along the ranks. So, I think those are my three comments, and I, uh, would like to know what you have to say about them.
Okay, uh, so first one was retirement. Um, you know, I think you bring up a really good point, and that, that sort of goes back to the, the concept of the report being a tool and, and simply reporting data. There's certainly some aspects about the data that we had agreement on before doing the, the actual survey. Uh, retirement i- is a factor that we typically include, uh, in our surveys. Um, I certainly understand that, you know, we're moving towards, uh, a world where pepper, the, the pension reform is, is going to more or less replace older programs. For the time being, we have found that because there are still so many, um, classic person members changing agencies that including, um, retirement is, um, the most meaningful point of comparison at the current time. Uh, certainly, the, you know, the report is, is available now to the city to look at different scenarios and, and looking at how each benefit potentially may, may impact the, the final outcome.
So, that brings me to a point, then, of asking you, um, when you give us this data, do you give it to us in a manipulative form?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So, it's easy enough for us, then, to go ahead and manipulate it to, so that we can look at, if we removed these, what I would call excessive retirement benefits, given the financial, um, um, uh, state that pensions are in, uh, then we could check how we stack up. Because we want to pay our, our employees what they should be earning. We don't want to cheat our employees. But on the other hand, we wanna know where we're going and why we're going there, and pension reform was, was very key. So, I wanna be able to look at benefits and make sure that, you know, we are paying our employees adequately and yet not leading us down a path that is not sustainable. Okay, so, thank you. So, manipulative data. Okay, so then, number two?
Yes, number two was longevity, and that would be, uh, that would be one of the benefits that, um, can be, uh, sort of a side item if that's something that, uh, is, we agree upon ahead of time. Essentially saying, well, there are some benefits, uh, data that we want to see in addition to our normal list. And the normal list that we, um, look at are those benefits that we consider to be automatic. We used to call them entitlements. We don't like to use that word anymore now, but, um, those are the types of benefits that where the employee wants, we put on payroll, uh, they automatically receive, uh, a whole slew of benefits, retirement and so forth. Uh, longevity would be a benefit that we consider to be conditional, and therefore, we don't automatically report it unless it's specifically called out ahead of time, you know, that we, that we, that we should. And the reason is that it, it is, it is individual-based and the employee, in order to receive that benefit, has to fulfill a certain condition, uh, such as longevity, a certain, a certain number of years of service. And what we look at in our report is, we do create kind of a straw person or sort of a, uh, prototype employee, uh, that's typically a five-year employee, uh, that would not earn , uh, longevity pay. Um, a- and again, even if we were to, if we, even if we were to create a, a different prototype employee, let's say, a ten- or fifteen-year employee, we would not automatically include longevity because it's so, uh, incumbent-specific. You know, we try to focus on what is the body of work that we're surveying and what's that body of work worth, um, taking the individual who's performing the work out of the equation, if that makes any sense.
Okay, so as a layman, looking at, at the job you're doing, and then being the layman that has to take it and make sense out of it as to, um, you know, when we, when we have to work with the numbers and with the people actually involved, I really would like to know total compensation. And, um, I understand why you can't use longevity because some employees will have it, some won't, um, you don't know who got it last year compared to who will get it next year type thing. I, I understand that, but still, if it is fact, if it's something that we are in fact paying and, uh, it should reflect in total compensation. I'm sure there are other things that did not reflect in total compensation. So, for instance, if I'm looking at hiring a new plumber and I want my plumber to, you know, first of all, come and work for us, which means we're going to have to offer them something that's about median pay and we're going to have to give them benefits that are somewhat comparable to cities around me, I want to be able to look at total compensation. Because maybe we'll bring them in at a low base salary, but we have found some other things that are really meaningful to them that would attract them to the city. And I can't compare it unless I know what total compensation is. So how do you recommend I do that?
I would say that the report that you have in front of you does give you probably, I would say, 95% of that information. You know, the biggest ticket items are reported, are contained in the report. You know, for your example, I would say that maybe there could be an agency that pays, you know, sometimes agencies have certification pay or shift differentials if there are different shifts, things of that nature. But again, that does not necessarily affect the overall total compensation picture. It's going to be more of the sort of fringe perks, if you will, or fringe benefits.
But it still costs us money to give those fringe perks and I think we need to see where we are when we do that. So anyway, okay, so, okay, so that just doesn't fit with your formulas and again, that's something that we need to add to our own knowledge base as we work with the document. Okay, and now what do you think of my third idea on adding the class?
Writing sort of a career ladder for a police officer. I will say, the best answer I can give you is what I see in other agencies. I do certainly see that. I see that other agencies have police recruits, they have police officer one and two, for example, to provide a certain ladder and there are certain requirements that are attached to that. Employees have to accomplish or attain a certain level of training or a number of years of experience and so forth. So it's not an uncommon model. I'd say maybe for a smaller city, not as common as for a larger city. For example, we just did a compensation survey for the city of San Diego and some of the agencies had a similar structure. They do tend to be larger, but that's not to say that a smaller city couldn't implement something like that. So I've certainly seen it.
Okay, well, I think those are my questions for now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have some.
Okay, Councilmember Papa?
Very comprehensive compensation plan. It's very informative and I think anybody looking for a good job can look at this sheet and kind of know where to go. So, but I couldn't help but notice that some of these dates, the effective dates, were as old as 2008. And to use it as, you know, for an average or a median, is that a fair analysis or what's the basis for that? You know, on this one page here, it's 2008, 2014, 2016, 15, and 17. So I couldn't imagine they didn't get a raise of some sort or a higher pay. Maybe it would affect us less, but you know, how does that come into the calculation on the median and the average prices for some of these classifications?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. You know, the effective date that you're seeing are the dates that those salaries first came in effect. And while it is rare now, that's absolutely true. It's rare that an agency wouldn't have received raises in such a long time. We do still find it every now and then.
Wouldn't this be the current date then? If it's not, I mean, if it's effective date versus the current, or is there a difference? I mean...
The reason, the reason we would report it this way is that specifically that the agency has pointed out to us that their salaries have not been increased since 2008 or 2014. And so it kind of shows, gives a little bit more information to you in the reports saying, wow, there are some agencies who have really haven't been able to...
I thought maybe that was just the data that you, that's the only data you can get, you know, in some of these cases.
Right, no, the salaries would, the salaries reported would have been the salaries effective, currently effective at the time of data collection.
Effective and the current.
Exactly right.
And there's no way of telling the next salary increase, obviously, and that's why so many of these columns...
Right, that's one of the questions we ask is, you know, is there, when is the, is there a next salary increase that's already been determined? So what is it? When and what is it? And some agencies just don't know that. Even, you know, when we do surveys in June sometimes and agencies know they're going to do something July 1st, sometimes they don't know up until the last minute what that will be. So the effective dates are sometimes, they may look a little bit off because agencies are just not always able to do something.
That's interesting. Also, there's a number of proposed positions, I guess, right? And it's all NA, NA, you know?
Oh, right.
Is that, are you proposing that the city hires these positions? Or how, what's the logic with the proposed position that doesn't have any price or doesn't have any data?
Right, the proposed positions or job classifications, those that came out as a recommendation out of the classification study.
Those are the new.
And so the reason that you'll see NAs on there is that because they didn't have a current salary attached to them, we weren't able to do a comparison between the current salary and the market, but would have still tried to make a recommendation because we either surveyed, actually went out and surveyed that classification, or were able to develop some kind of internal alignment or, you know, drawing a relationship between that classification and others in the city.
So like the revenue supervisor, there's nothing on that page except for, you know, proposed or something like that. Are you proposing that we hire someone for that position or relocate someone into that position?
It would be relocating, right? Right, our typically classification studies don't include any kind of organizational development, so we would not recommend adding or eliminating any positions. We would just say, based on the positions that are currently at the city and based on the body of work that they're performing, we would recommend either no change at all, everything looks fine, or we might recommend a title change, or we may actually recommend introducing, either introducing a new job classifications to the city or moving an employee from at current, between two currently existing job classifications.
In the body. How is retroactive pay accounted for?
That is a very good question. Retroactive pay, that's sometimes a little bit of a conundrum, I'll be quite honest. And the reason is that when we do the data collect, during the timeframe that we do the data collection, and once we draw that line to say, as of this date, here's the most current data, if an agency implements a retroactive increase or change after that fact, then it may not be included in our report. And unfortunately, you know, at one point, because this is all fluid information, at one point, we basically draw the line and say, you know, we cannot make, we can't continue updating the data all the time. At one point, we'll have to just, we have to actually develop a report and recommendations based on what we currently have.
Right. And how often do you recommend the study be done? How, you know, like every two years, every four years, every six months?
I would say, every six months, no, just kidding. I would say, you know...
Another trick question.
Not to be self-serving, no, I actually do recommend that, there's absolutely no reason to do a study like this every year or even every other year, you know, just obviously because of the effort it takes and the expense. But I would say that typically what I see, agencies, you know, implement some kind of a cost of living adjustment over the course of a few years to keep up with the market. And then every five or so years, you may want to look at it in a little more of a comprehensive fashion. I'd also say that what helps often is that, you know, as HR is recruiting, trying to recruit for vacant positions, when, you know, you find that it's hard to, you know, create a larger talent pool or if the talent pool shrinks, one of the reasons may be is that maybe the market may have sort of spiked in an area that's specialized, let's say, and it may be worth doing a spot checking of some positions every two to three years by not doing a comprehensive study like this.
Well, I would think you have all the data, but obviously it changes a lot, but, you know, putting it together would be a little bit easier. So just reiterating once again, so for the 2008 effective date, it's basically safe to say there hasn't been a raise in 17, nine years.
You know, you're almost, now, I want to almost doubt myself now because it does sound so unbelievable, but, you know, you can certainly go back and, you now want to go back and check.
2013.
That number obviously came from somewhere. It's, it is unlikely these days because we are seeing a lot more movement with cost of living adjustments. But I mentioned to say that that was the date that was reported to us.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember Moore?
How do you come up with the number of agencies that you use?
How do we come up with that?
Yeah.
The number or which ones?
The number and which ones.
Okay. You know, the 10 to 12 agencies, that's sort of a magic number that seems to be an industry practice, you know, for, we've been doing this for 33 years and that seems to give us enough data to base our recommendations on without, you know, causing the cost to really explode. And, you know, every additional agency you survey, of course, means additional consultant hours and cost. And so, you know, finding the balance between providing you enough, you know, providing sufficient data, but not going overboard with the data collection seems to be right there around the 10 to 12 agency mark. So in terms of giving you a valid data sample, we find that 12 agencies is a sufficient number to survey.
Are there like public databases of all the cities and all the positions that you can also pull from, or is that...
Well, only so much so that, you know, every agency, to the extent that every agency has their own website and many agencies now post all of their information online. So we can, we can obtain a lot of information from individual websites, but there really isn't a real database. You know, every survey that we do is very much customized to the client that we're working with. So it's really pulling data from individual agencies and individual agency websites.
This is a little out there, but do you, do you compare like private industry positions ever to city positions, like as far as benefits for, let's say they have a similar accounting or something like that?
It's a very common question, actually. And while we have done that, it is very challenging, simply because the data, or I should say, the compensation models and therefore the data that we can obtain from each sector is very inconsistent. In the public sector, we have sort of a luxury of information being public and being able to obtain very detailed information. Whereas in the private sector, you essentially have to work with purchase surveys because most companies that you call up to and ask for their compensation data, they will turn you down and not give it to you because they consider proprietary information.
But you could use a website like that, that has salary, like a salary website that tells you the range of that position.
Yeah, we actually, we do subscribe to the Economic Research Institute's compensation database and so it does have some valuable information. What's challenging or what makes it a bit inconsistent is that, you know, we can do such a customized and very well analyzed survey when we look at other cities. In the private sector, like I said, you sort of, you have to rely on published data and the amount and maybe the quality of the analysis that goes into that data is questionable. Right, it's not something we have control over. So you're basically just reporting data that some, someone else is reporting to you. And so there's a little bit of that inconsistency. And then your question about benefits is, that's probably the area where there is most, the greatest inconsistency and that is that the benefits, or the overall, again, the world compensation models in the two sectors are very different, where in the private sector, you, you know, you may sometimes find greater salaries, but then on the benefits side of the house, on those automatic benefits that are just given, they are usually lower, yet at the same time, in the private sector, you then find, you know, performance bonus structures and stock options and other fringe benefits that as a public agency you just can't offer. So it's a very, you know, it's kind of a disparate comparison between those two sectors.
Okay, thanks. Welcome.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And we will use this as a reference point and receive and file.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could, before we move on, just want, I'm just feeling the need, I guess, to reiterate that this was a significant effort on a strategic plan objective that this council and staff embraced in terms of the commitment that we all made to focus on a strategic plan that identifies recruiting and developing and compensating and retaining our own staff in terms of a vision moving forward. And so I say that, we've said, it is a tool that we can use moving forward, but I think that we need to be looking at it closely if we're going to continue to focus in this strategic goal area.
Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Since there was nothing removed, can we have a motion to approve?
A moved.
Second. Councilmember Moore, please vote. Okay, five to zero. There are no public hearings, there is no unfinished and continued business and we're down to new business. Approval of landscape maintenance, scope of service. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to turn this item over to Steve Mider, our Public Works Director, and also now we have Joe Tolericco, our Landscape Maintenance Supervisor, who's in the audience as well in support of this item.
Joe, can you bring it up, please? Thank you, City Manager Ingram, all the mayor members of the council. What we have tonight is, essentially, we were asked to look at our landscape maintenance contract and look for efficiencies to ensure we are providing the services expected at the most cost-effective price possible. So this is a, this is basically a set of slides that goes through, I thought it'd be important to take a step back and understand how the scope of services we were depending on the last five years was developed. And then from there, we now have our new Landscape Maintenance Supervisor that brings expertise to the process and asked him to take a new set of look, new set, new set of eyes on it, look at it. And what we have here tonight is the results of our analysis. So 2013 citywide contract bid award. That's, I went to that point to find out the scope of services at that point was awarded with enhanced, with enhanced scope at that time based on community input in 2012. The contract before 2013, probably around for a decade, was enhanced and awarded to, you'll hear the word spectrum, that was our contractor that was awarded per this contract. So in 2013, citywide scope of services provided additional landscaping services. So we enhanced the services as compared to before, added emptying city trashcans at parks, basically the city-owned trashcan, 115 of them, parks, beach parking lots, citywide. So that scope was added. Added annual mulching projects. Before that, we didn't have that. So this, another enhancement. Increased fertilization, aeration, de-thatching... Increased fertilization, aeration, de-thatching frequency. So we increased up, I would say we probably put more attention into the maintenance of our parks and our landscape facilities through this methodology. Added infield maintenance to Zoller Field. So these are all enhancements based on community input in 2012. That contract became the contract we depended on till last year. And we'll get to that. And in, on the trash, I have a slide. At the very end of the presentation, I wanted to talk about the trash, emptying of trash cans and how it's handled now, what I think the path forward is, based on what I've learned from research in the past. It was contracted out, a portion of it was contracted out before. And we'll get to that slide at the end. Landscape, so broken into, I also wanted to explain the scope of services is broken into two components. Landscape maintenance work, which I like to call baseline work. That is the, you're a mo every week, you're going to do it 50 times a year, you're going to edge the hedges, well, you're going to edge the grass, you're going to trim the hedges. I got to get my expert up here. So, so anyway, very prescriptive work. This is what we're going to do every week. The contract was very clear. Landscape contract was awarded July 22nd, 2013. And this next slide is very important. Spectrum Care received it for 481, there's two bids received. Competitive sealed bids, low bid won in accordance to public, public code, contract code. Complete landscaping, 640,000. So Spectrum Care got it for substantially less. They, I would say they left a lot of money on the table. But everything I hear, the last five years, they've done an outstanding job and they honored their commitment to doing an excellent job. And they did not, just because they put, left a lot of money on the table, they did do excellent work in the city, they went bankrupt. So in October 6th, 2016, with one day warning, they said, we're going bankrupt. According to, according to what I've heard, nine other cities lost. The same day, they just told all cities, one day warning with nine other cities. And clearly their strategy of low price, high volume didn't work. So my concern is, of course, this 481 probably wasn't sustainable. So I think, and I think the bankruptcy kind of tells us that. So what we did in response to that, immediately, right away, we took the same RFP, same scope of work, sent it back out to the streets in October. Five firms responded, so I can say we had a good response. And you can see, when you add up the landscape maintenance baseline work and extraordinary, what we call extraordinary work, which is, I like to call unforeseen work. It's when you have, let's say your sprinkler heads broke or your controller broke or your irrigation pipe broke, you don't know how to plan that, but you want to get a competitive unit price on these very standard items that break. So you actually put it in the bid, you go ahead and give a number, you estimate a number, you put it in the bid, say, I'm going to have a thousand sprinkler heads replaced in a year. How much will that cost per unit? So they, that's how we get that number established. So and we may not replace a thousand that year, we may replace 500. So it's just a way to establish a price, a competitive price. And that gives us a total. As you can see, the low bid on this bid was 604,000. Second bid, 640,000. Then it goes on up to 1.38 million. So I clearly see that there's two competitive bids here, which are comparable to 2013. So I consider those prices, given the scope. And this did include the trash hauling. So this did include that. So this is exactly the same scope as 2013. So I, I see the number spread, I think, I think everything's indicating the prices have gone up, that 481 wasn't sustainable and it probably wasn't sustainable. And I think the evidence is clear. This is probably a more realistic price you're going to see for the scope of services that I think delivers the expectation of what our city should be. So the tra, the trash is included, but there is a way, I think there's a more efficient way to do that. And I think it's important, we, I note that, that when this was bid, there was questions asked and every landscape contractor didn't know how to handle that trash component. So when you get uncertainty in bids, you get higher prices. So I think there's a way to even take this number and make it more efficient by simply taking the trash component out. And again, I'll get to that at the end of the slide, some ideas there. So that's, so then we end up rejecting these bids because we were at, budgeted at 481. The goal was to stay at 481, that was within the budget. To stay within the budget, we went back and released, rewrote and significantly reduced the scope of services and sent that out for competitive bid. And it had substantial, substantially reduced scope of services. Also, on February 13th, council awarded a five-month contract to SoCal Landscaping Services for 288,610. Now, the way that number came about was, again, a lot of things were removed and it was not even a, it was a contract that essentially what I call performance-based contract. It was a contract that says, we're going to have no weeds, we're going to have grasses no longer than one inch. It was very general and it was very dependent on staff overseeing the contract and making sure that the criteria was met. It was not a, meant to be a long-term contract. And, and there's a lot, it just, there's a lot of items in there that probably need to be put back in as a prescriptive. So July 1st, 2017, exercise first, extension of the agreement. And total cost is projected at 472. Okay, so April 2016 landscape, our landscape maintenance supervisor position was vacated. And this is, this is critical because this position provided resources to closely manage the landscape contract. So when the landscape contract went bank, the landscape contractor went bankrupt, that contractor had five years' experience in our city. And we had a landscape maintenance supervisor had extensive experience with our city as well. All of a sudden, we didn't have that historic knowledge, I'll say, historic memory. So we had a new contractor and then we started them and we didn't have our new supervisor, maintenance supervisor onboard yet. But now, as of September 2017, we have Joe Tellerico.
Tellerico. Tellerico.
I'd never say that right. Did you say that correctly?
Tellerico.
Tellerico. Okay. So, so he brings 17 years of experience, landscape industry work with various municipalities. He has various certifications in landscaping and he brings the needed expertise to manage our contract, our landscape contract. And I think he's done an outstanding job bringing our landscape up to our standards. So staff completed, and then we asked him, one of his first assignments was to look at the spectrum, I'll call it the Spectrum Care contract or the 2013 scope of services. And he's looked at it with the idea, what could be removed from the contract to make it more cost effective and still provide the expectation of services we all require? So he, the recommendation, items reduced or removed, this is the scope items. Fertilization, we're going to lower it down to two times annually. Right now, it's substantially higher than that. And we're not getting value for it, but we contracted out. If you bid it out, you're going to get a price. If you ask for 10, you're going to get a price for 10. If you don't need it, you probably won't get a discount. So let's get it down to where it should be. Pest and rodent control, we can do that in-house more cost effectively. Zoller Field infield maintenance, that's something that's not really required. Our staff can do it more effectively and efficiently. It's not a very intensive requirement. Trash can pickup, again, well, that's, that's the big item and we'll talk about that at the very end. And he's recommending we add to the scope, Main Street sidewalk cleaning, water and maintenance of hanging baskets on Main Street. So a little more maintenance, more services directed at Main Street in terms of, in terms of overall this site, oversight of it. And there's also, I think I heard, we can also add why they're there. They can also do a, just make sure they see something out of order on the sidewalk or the planner, the planners and the bricks. They see something, they can report it and write it up that day and get it back to us. We can schedule repair of it. So that can be added too. So trash can pickup, we have 115 trash cans to empty regularly. And there are 60 trash cans that are emptied daily, seven days a week. Prior to 2013, a standalone contract was used for Main Street at a cost of 25,000 annually. The remaining, the remaining trash cans were emptied by city, by city staff. And the challenge is, when we lost the Spectrum contract, public works staff immediately took over all the trash can emptying responsibilities. Now, we did that in 2012, minus the, the beach slots in Main Street, which requires it every day. What's happening is that's adding up to, I think, extensive overtime on the weekend. We're not set up to work Saturday and Sunday. So I'm recommending that for at least Saturday and Sunday, we look at the outside contract. And maybe, and say we ask the, ask the landscape contractor, when we have this all scoped out, you're welcome to bid it, maybe they can bid it efficiently, we'll see. But I think that's the path forward, is to just look at Friday, Saturday and Sunday, thus keeping our overtime down because, again, we're not really staffed to work seven days a week, which is what's required to make this work. And it's a full, it's a full day, there's 60 cans to empty. And what I'm understanding is to make sure we don't interfere with the commerce and the beach activities, we actually come in at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning and get this done, just to make sure we're not interfering with main, Main Street activities during the busy weekends. So it would make probably more efficient economically to do it by contract. And I'm going to be looking at, we're already looking at developing a scope. And again, we'll ask the landscape contractor to bid it and we'll see if they can do it more efficiently. He'll be mobilized to the site. But I think we will get a more efficient cost if we don't include it in the landscape and let them do what they're good at. So that is, this, these are some recent projects we completed in the landscape group.
Nice.
So, questions?
Of course, Councilmember Deaton.
Of course. I have a couple. First, I want to thank you and thank you, Joe Tellerico. Steve, it rhymes with Costa Rica. Sort of. Thank you for reviewing not just this, but all of the procedures. I've been really impressed, Steve, ever since you came to the city, how you're looking at everything we do with fresh eyes. And I just think that's just very, very cool and I want to thank you for that. And thank you too, Joe, the city's looking so much better. So, and thank you, Tim, for walking around with everybody on all of it. So I think you guys are doing a great job and you're really on the right track. So thank you so much. I have a couple of questions on the document itself, the contract scope of work. It says, all repairs to damaged city property shall be completed within 24 hours. And I don't know what city property you're talking about. Obviously, it's not drywall or, what is it? So it's landscaping stuff? So it's, it's okay?
I, well, I would venture to say if they are, let's say they remove a tree or plant a tree and they damage the curb line or a sidewalk panel, they would be responsible.
Okay, so it's stuff they have damaged?
Correct.
It's not just any old damage?
No, it's stuff that maybe they tore through as they drive up onto the turf to do some repairs and they broke a sprinkler head or some hardscape or...
Okay, got it. All right, talking about, let's, let's stay with landscape just for a minute. Talking about Main Street, I really appreciate your putting in there their eyes and looking at the sidewalks. We need every single eye on the sidewalks looking for treppenfalls. So if, if they could just report them right away, it would be very, very helpful to us when they get there. So thank you for adding that. One thing I didn't think about until tonight as you were going through it, Steve, was the, the gutters along Main Street. We, we have a lot of complaints about that and sometimes the, the water, it sits and stagnates there. And I know that in the past, Sean had put out people to hand sweep it and to keep it dry and clean, particularly there around Javatines and, you know, where it just seems to settle and we don't want mosquitoes and we don't want, you know, disease-bearing stuff. So is there a way to add that in the contract, in the scope of work?
We do have that in the current scope of work. We added that. That was one of the things that we added on the cleanup of Main Street. So you have the bulb outs where you get the leaf from the ficus trees that build up and that's what catches the water that, but we addressed that in the new scope.
Okay, good. And we're also very flat, so that, so maybe you can point that out to me because I missed it. So I appreciate that. Trash cans, I think I'd like to, oh, first, let me ask you, the extraordinary work, when that's bid, that's not necessarily something we'll pay, right? That's extraordinary work that we will pay at that rate if we need it, but if we don't need it, we don't pay it at all.
Correct.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. And then the trash cans. On holiday weekends, in addition to Saturdays and Sundays or maybe Friday, Saturday, Sundays, I think we also need to address holidays. Sometimes they fall on a Monday. Obviously, we don't want to pay overtime for that either. But have we thought about getting more Big Bellies? And I know they're very expensive, but it seems to me that in the long run, people are more expensive than the Big Bellies. So I don't know what our thought has been on that.
I, I haven't looked into that, but I will.
Okay, because the Big Belly is such a great thing. And, and when we do the trash cans on the weekends and the holidays, that's not a one-time-a-day thing that we come in and get everything ready for people to come in. Those things have to be, you know, emptied all day long. So, because the trash cans end up overflowing very quickly. So I was just thinking, you know, Big Bellies might really help us in the long term. I know short-term they can be expensive, but I also know we got, what, Patrick, five on grants?
That's correct, Councilmember Deaton. And, and I can tell you that there may be some opportunities in the future to acquire some more Big Bellies through grants.
Okay, so grant funding would be great. And I, I would think that if we could do it for our visitor-serving areas on the Big Bellies, that might save us a lot of money long, in long-term, especially if we can get them on grants. So that's all I have. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work. We're very pleased to have you. Thank you.
You could stay up there, I think we have a couple. Back to the items changed in the new scope of service. Removal of pest and rodent control, how would that get addressed then?
We would address that with an outside source, probably, for rodents.
I'm not sure how, you know, big an issue it is, but I would imagine it would come.
It's not, I think it's, it's more the issue of gopher control, really in the landscape, not so much rodents, but gophers. And as that, as they appear in the landscape, then we'll deal with it as, as we see fit, yeah.
So, and what about the removal of cigarette butt collection containers? What does that mean? Is that just going to be programs over or?
No, we've actually been fortunate enough in the previous year of those, the cigarette containers were installed by Surf Rider. Actually, Surf Riders come forward and they're actually maintaining them now and emptying them regularly. There were some issues in the past where they weren't getting to them enough. There's actually now a value in recycling the butt itself. So there's a recyclable value to them to actually maintain them themselves and collect them. So they've actually taken on that and they're doing it themselves.
Okay, yeah. Okay, good. So it's not, just the item is going to be removed, but not the collection containers itself, so?
That's correct. It's just not a maintenance function that we no longer have to perform.
And you added the blowing on Main Street, or the, I think it was cleaning of the sidewalks. Does that include the gutters too?
Yes, that's really what it's pertaining to. It's pertaining to the buildup of the ficus leaves and stagnant water that...
Yeah, I mean, you might want to add that under one of the items. I mean, I know it's sidewalk and gutters, but I know sometimes it gets really technical, right? And getting back to what Ms. Deaton said... And, and getting back to what Ms. Deaton said about the repairs, the city, a damaged city property should be completed within twenty-four hours after damage is reported or noticed. That doesn't really say that they're doing the damage, it just says if they see something, you know, damaged, they're going to notice it and it should be reported, you know? I mean, if, if your intent is for them to fix their own stuff, you might want to make it a little bit more clearer.
Yeah, we can clarify that a little bit, that they, that there is more definitely thing they damaged to repair and anything that they see damaged to report.
Yeah, okay. And then, I mean, to report, fix it in twenty-four hours, that's pretty rough to go there. All sidewalks adjacent to city maintained parkways shall be swept and blown, swept or blown or cleaned daily to remove any glass or debris. They should also be thoroughly cleaned every week on a daily, isn't it, Tim? It seems like it's a lot of cleaning on, I mean, is that every sidewalk in the whole city?
No, it's not.
I mean, that's what I read. I mean, is this just, you know, Main Street, is this Old Town?
It's, it's Main Street, it's park areas, yeah.
Because, I mean, I have, I have parkways by my house that I can, you know, I'd love you.
Yeah, no, it's everything is a landscaper that, that they'll be maintaining, so...
Can't get it. You want them over at your house?
Yeah.
It is. City owned, it's city maintained, your own. Okay, that's, oh, yeah. I think it was mentioned about Saturdays and Sundays and holidays, but also special events are big trash collector days or iller-uppers, if you will. So that's an important day because a lot of times I'll go there the day after, like the Christmas parade's on a Friday and Saturday, there's just a lot of stuff that...
Yeah, I think we tend to use our in-house.
Our show, I mean, you know all the...
Yeah, we actually, for each of the special events, we have to create its own plan on cleaning it and we, we usually address that separately. For instance, the car show, we work with a combination of both in-house and contract staff on that to make sure that there's proper cleaning going on. With the Christmas parade, in-house staff does that immediately following the parade, they just kind of wait for the streets to clear and then we come in and do that. So for the special event, it's something that we would manage ourselves, but again, as Steve was saying, if we had a contract resource, that would always be something else that we could use in the instance of those events, if they were happening, to bring them in to lighten the load on some of the in-house staff.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I piggyback back to what we were talking about on the gutters? So, so maybe I didn't miss it, it's not here where it specifically calls out the gutters?
Um, side, yeah.
Okay, so...
We can, we can change that specifically.
Would you add that specifically, please? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Siskel, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
I, I was just gonna, I was just gonna compliment you on the specificity and detail in here, it was amazing. I got tired just, just at all the detail work that's in here. I just had a question, it had, "No dyes shall be applied when applying liquid weed control to page," is that something that would, is it to track, to track where you put it or something?
Absolutely, yeah. Just to give you an example, we used to do in Pomona, it was called the Phillips Ranch area, and so when spraying Roundup or glyphosate, we would have to put a Blaze on, which is a color-coded, whether it be blue or red, so they can see the areas that were being sprayed, so...
And I, and I noticed you even had separate equipment, so no cross-contamination in the mowing equipment. And so anyway, I thought that was, I thought it was very interesting reading through here. So thank you for all your hard work.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. I, I had to comment also on the pest, the pest and rodent control. There, there is a problem in Edison Park in the garden with a, a lot of rats that, and other, you know, rodents that get in there, I've heard from residents. So will that get handled still or...
Um, yeah, it will. I've noticed a lot of rabbits, not so much rats, but every morning when I go to open the park up, there's a plethora of rabbits running around trying to get the gardener's vegetables and stuff that they're growing over there. But yeah, I will address anything that's...
One lady puts, actually, he puts her own rat traps in her garden and catches two or three rats.
Okay.
And the other thing was, on, on planning out for the future, can, can we try to do more drought tolerant on the, on like medians or, so that it's less maintenance? Maybe they'll save some money in the future.
Yeah, definitely, that's a great idea. Looking to more drought tolerant plants, more California natives.
Because I know that you can still have it look nice and, and not have to maintain it as much. So just a comment or feature. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, you've answered all my questions and I was pretty concerned with the Zoder Field. You seem to have a handle on that, that maintenance issue and the rats. I was worried about the rats. Well, thank you very much. And we are, is there anyone that would like to make a, a motion?
Is that not a receiving call?
No.
That's an approval.
I'd like to move approval of the scope and sequence as with the changes that we noted and also in my motion, say thank you.
Second. Okay, please vote. Five to zero. Next item on the agenda is supplemental police officer staffing and funding. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to turn this item over initially to our Police Chief, Joe Miller, who will then turn the item over to Steve Mider to give an update on pool status. And noting that, I want to thank our partner over at Naval Weapons Station, Greg Smith, who's been with us for the last three hours waiting for this item. And he's here in, in the event there's any technical questions related to the Naval Weapons Station site and the timeline for review and approval at that site. And then Steve will turn it over to Vicky Beetley to talk about financial impacts and then we will open it up for council questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Miller.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram and Mayor and Councilpersons. I just wanted to start off by saying, some of this might be redundant, but we've gone through this multiple times. And as you know, I'm requesting that you adopt Resolution Number Six, Sixty-seven, seventy-four in the effort to add two police officers to the Seal Beach Police Department. I brought this to the council at the strategic planning meeting back in April fourth of two thousand seventeen. I wanted to go over some of the things that we've discussed in the past, which is important for the community to know why we're in the position we're in today. I wanted to give some of the assembly bills that have been passed and that will kind of give a, an idea as to why crime has increased. And with the current staffing levels that I have today, it's not sufficient. And I wanted to go over AB one oh nine, which is a, it was put in place in two thousand eleven. It's a public safety realignment and that's due to prison overcrowding. And Proposition forty-seven, which was in two thousand fourteen, that reduces the penalties for some crimes initiative such as what used to be a felony for cocaine or methamphetamines is now a misdemeanor and can only be received, they'd receive a citation and be released from our custody. And two thousand sixteen Prop fifty-seven, which is Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act of two thousand sixteen, all these were put in place. In addition to that, as we all know, is a marijuana one, California Marijuana Legalization Initiative, which was also in two thousand sixteen, Proposition sixty-four. So those are just some of the issues that have created the problem that we have today. We've taken into account, I want to give you some of the statistics, yes, in the last year. Now, some of these are misleading because we, fortunately for a small community, don't have major crime in some of the specific areas, but I'd say rape in our, our city has gone up two hundred percent. Robberies are up four hundred and thirty-three percent. Assaults are up ninety-two percent. Burglaries are up nine percent and larceny is up twenty percent. A good thing to add, if I gave any positive note, your car won't be stolen as much, but it's, we are down only thirteen percent in that. So total Part One crimes, which are serious crimes, are up twenty-seven point five percent. Another thing I wanted to discuss is calls for service. In nineteen ninety-eight, we had ten thousand six hundred and fifty-seven calls for service with thirty-seven police officers. Keep in mind, we have thirty-three today. In two thousand three, we had thirteen thousand three hundred and eight calls for service with thirty-six police officers. Today, or I should say in two thousand sixteen, we're not complete yet, we had twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-four calls for service with thirty-three officers. More than double, almost triple the amount of calls for service and we have less cops. You know, I kind of believe this is kind of challenging because when I bring this to the community and I bring this to you, one of the number-one calls for service we get from just council is their concern on crime. One of the, I'd say, the number-one thing we receive from the community in calls for service is crime problems. It's not necessarily traffic, it, it, it is associated to the crime that we have today. I get these calls all the time, not only myself, but the voice commander, the commanders in support and in operations. We're dealing with homeless issues, early release issues, and the public's perception is that we don't have officers visible every day. And I'm going to be honest with you, we don't. We don't, we can't provide that kind of service. We do what we can, but I, I think the community needs to know that today, one call is, one accident in an intersection will take three cops. It's, and truthfully, if we only have three cops in service, how do we provide the service and the visibility needed to reduce Part One crimes? We've gone out to the public and we've spoken at coffee with the cops. We've actually had a community meeting, we have another one scheduled tomorrow night. We're doing our best to provide, educate the public and do everything we can to educate the public on reducing, reducing crime by locking their doors, signage, we've done all these things. But the truth of the matter is, I'm understaffed. For us to be visible, to, for us to actually be out there today and to be more visible on Main Street, to be out in the community, I have to provide, I have to give more cops to the community. And I think I can't emphasize it enough. I mean, I'll give you an example. During the summer, I was trying to do what I could to, to provide visibility on Main Street and I reallocated a body from patrol and assigned him down to Main Street. During that time, we had some tragedies that occurred throughout the community and I didn't have enough personnel, so I had to pull him from downtown. I had to put him into investigations and I had to move him from that area to another area and then for him to assist in those investigations because we're over a hundred and thirty cases backlog. This has nothing to do with the work that our, our, our staff is doing. They're exceptional. They are responding to calls immediately, we're still trying to do what we can, but at some point, I, I got to tell you, I, I personally have been here for thirty years and today is not the way it was twenty years ago. Today, you're looking at thirty thousand calls for service with less police officers. When, in nineteen ninety-eight, and I can go back, we only had ten thousand calls for service and we had thirty-seven police officers. We're doing way more with less. And I think at some point, we have to say enough is enough and we have to add police services. And, and one of the strategic objectives was to honestly increase patrol coverage and reduce Part One crimes. I need cops to do that. My other thing and my final thing before I pass it on to Public Works, I, I wanted to address one of the things that was concerning to me is one of the community members, Dr. Goldberg, that basically brought up potentially reducing or taking away two-point-seven percent from our officers. I have a, really have a hard time believing that a community member, when the majority of our cops can't even afford to live in this community, I have a hard time believing that. We're going to try, his suggestion is that we should take away two-point-seven percent from their families to provide better protection for him and the community. I have a hard time dealing with that. So I, I think moving forward, you know, I can only ask that you would approve this and, and take into account that, we're not asking because it benefits us, it benefits the community. And I'll pass it on to Steve.
Thank you, Joe. Tonight, I'm going to give a brief update on where we're at on the pool. Our proposed aquatic center, I refer to it as an aquatic center, the community pool, Magaw Community Pool was built in nineteen sixty-eight and looking forward with all the codes and requirements, to build the same facility now requires support facilities. So it's, I like to refer to that as an aquatic center. It's not simply a community pool anymore when you build a facility like this, but it's a complete facility. So moving forward, we, in two thousand fourteen, we awarded a design, a preliminary design study to an architectural firm. That study had three major goals, to conduct an extensive public outreach to help develop the project criteria, also to conduct a siting study. And once the site was ultimately chosen to perform, to give us a preliminary design including a detailed probable cost of construction included with that. So that would be the last, third and final phase of that study once the site was determined. So the study, through the study, to date, the two, first two goals are accomplished and we now know we have two sites that are being considered for further analysis. The, the existing site at Magaw is, is one that was determined to be feasible. And the other site that we are currently analyzing and pursuing is at, located at the Naval's Weapons Station. So each site has unique challenges and each site has unique benefits. So all, the timelines are very similar, but for different reasons, and I did put a timeline together. But real quickly, we have basically, both sites require leases from outside agencies, in particular, the Navy case, in the Navy site, we have to work through a federal process and we've actually made some headway there and some very good progress, but you measure it very slowly. So though we have good news, we've made it to two major hurdles and of course, Greg is here to answer questions on the process. Right now, that lease agreement is in the Pentagon, waiting final approval. So we've made it to two major approvals. So that's good news. Now, we're looking at a timeline to get the lease executed, an additional eighteen months, but everything is indicating that we have very good reason to believe that, that we are on the right path and ultimate approval is within reach. Now, the Magaw school site has some unique challenges as well. To build up a new facility with new codes and the criteria our community expressed interest in, we need a bigger footprint. And that particular site is very tight. And the school board, we have met with the school's board staff and they are telling us that there are some definite hurdles to be accomplished to make the site work with the existing use of the school and there's some other existing facilities. To get all that to fit is going to be a challenge and require some extensive negotiations. And I would, and there's some challenges and there'll be some give and take, but in the end, it is a feasible site. And it does have its, it's, it's got some interesting timelines, though the, the lease process isn't as long. We do have to get, ultimately have to have approval from the school board and the state architect. So where we, we save time on the lease agreement, we're going to lose it during engineering when we have to get approval by the state, basically the state architect up in Sacramento. So that will slow us down during engineering. So when you put all this together, the timelines on both sites, whatever is ultimately chosen, puts us at a FY two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three timeline. So that would be completion of project. So that would be completion of project for different reasons, but we all, we basically get in the second half. That estimate, I believe, is accurate, it's not overly optimistic, and it's not overly conservative based on what I am understanding from the agencies that are controlling the front half of the schedule. Now, as soon as we get to designing construction, the city, it's a Public Works contract, and we have control of the schedule. But the upfront part, as you see on screen here, the site lease agreement part, is something we just simply don't have control of the schedule, though I believe we have a very good indication of what you see there is accurate. Now, it's, we don't have final approval, of course, and that's beyond our control, but all indications are these timelines here in the front half are doable. So we're looking at construction award at the end of two thousand twenty, twenty-one fiscal year, so what you're seeing up there is five, you're seeing six fiscal years laid out up there. So we're, obviously, we're, we're not looking at preliminary design completion at the earliest, mid-year from now. So the red line there shows you where we're at today, and the lease agreement is the top phase. So you've got lease agreement, preliminary facility design, we can't finish that until we pick a site, because we don't have, we didn't, we didn't contract to do two sites to that level. So we have to get a lease agreement and have an ultimate choice of what site we're going to go with, then we finish our preliminary design study, then we do the environmental. And the environmental is actually fairly straightforward on both these projects, I'm told, because the state owns one site and the federal government owns the other site. So six months should be plenty, and you'll see some overlap, I think we can get some efficiencies there, but six months should be adequate. So engineering is green. On the federal job, because they're giving us a site, it's an ideal construction, you give us four acres, we'll go build a project, we can get that done in twelve months, because I'm not working with the state architect. Down below at the school site, I did give us additional time, another six months, because I'm working with the state architect, so that means I have to be subject to their approval, which might have to go back and forth, and I'm on their schedule. So again, maybe I can get some efficiencies there, but I'm not assuming I will. So that's how I kind, that's how these schedules end up being the same, and I didn't back into it, it just ended up being that way, different reasons. So the orange is the construction bidding, that's four months, and of course, a project of this size is going to be at least eighteen months, I actually gave us a little more time, if it is at the school, because you're in such a tight proximity, again, it's not a, it's, the Navy side offers an open lot, and just go build it. And we have some tight criteria to meet at the school site. So there's your timeline, and that is the project update.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? Why don't we wait until after the Director of Finance?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's directly on the pool, though.
It's not, well, the staff report's in three parts, so let's put it all together at the end, and then ask a question. Just keep it in mind.
You're acting like I can keep that.
Right.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, so yes, you are in the home stretch now, at least from the staff perspective of presentation. So in April of two thousand seventeen, as you've already heard, the City Council added an objective for hiring two additional police officers to enhance the public safety of the community. The goal was added to address concerns voiced by the residents of the city regarding increase in crime. You've heard the statistics now, this evening, from Chief Miller. Prior to the end of the last fiscal year, staff recommended financial solutions, which included assigning one-time revenues that had come throughout the year as a funding source for the additional officers. Council was hesitant to move forward in that direction and directed staff to present funding options that lasted for more than one year. As a reminder, the budget technique that's used in Seal Beach is something that's called zero-based budgeting. This means that each year, the budget starts at zero, other than contract costs that are in place, nothing is presumed, and all expenditures are defended. Annually, through the budgeting process, we look at programs, services, and staffing levels to meet the needs of the communities. This year, when the current budget was first drafted, the deficit was approximately two million dollars. Through tough discussions and some one-time solutions, that deficit became an eleven-thousand-dollar surplus. I'm highlighting this just as a reminder to let you know of the efforts that we have already gone through, to make sure that our budget is a budget that is needed and a budget that is defensible. And also, as a reminder, because of one phone call to the Coastal Commission, that surplus most likely will end as a deficit. In two thousand eight, nine fiscal year, the Swimming Pool Designated Fund was established. Since that time, approximately two hundred thousand has been spent on various studies. Based upon the update from Director Mider, we now know that breaking ground on a pool at any location is many years away. We also know that the value of the dollars set aside has not been adjusted to keep up with inflation, and given the economic environment, the earnings on the money has been well below the inflation rate as well. In two thousand and nine dollars, five million may have been enough to build a pool, but in two thousand seventeen dollars, that is clearly not enough. The staff report highlights a number of revenue options, as well as some expense mitigation options that have been discussed by staff over the last year. And we did start these discussions when we worked on balancing the budget over the last, for this current fiscal year that we're in. So we have been talking about a lot of these ideas for a long time now. The most significant of the options is a potential oil revenue, and also, that's likely the most immediate. When the budget is prepared, as a side note, when the budget is prepared, general fund revenues are projected based upon information known at the time. The revenues have essentially remained flat over the years, adjusted for one-time revenue receipts that have come in. And the current environment is currently not, excuse me, the current environment cannot currently support the addition of two additional police officers, which is why the recommendation from staff is to use the now idle Swimming Pool Designated Fund. The resolution included with the staff report specifically requests funding for one year. The reasons for the request are many, but the keys are that staff understands the significance associated with making this decision, and wants the community to know that they will be able to see at any time where the money is being spent. We did not want to presume that the next budget, for the next budget, the funding for these two officers will be hidden in the police department budget. In fact, a separate division will be created so that anyone can look in the budget document and see these two officers separately. The resolution also stipulates that any new revenue generated that has been identified as public safety funding will first be used to repay this money that's advanced from the Swimming Pool Fund. The other key reason is that it is the intention of staff to work on all of the options listed in the staff report as a way to offset the financial challenges that will continue to face the community for the next several years at least. It is the sincere belief of the executive staff that over the next year, we can work together to create financial opportunities that will provide ongoing revenue to support the addition of these two officers. Finally, this is sort of a commercial, past results do not guarantee future performance. At the end of the fiscal year, if there may be some budgetary savings that we have, but we won't know until the books are closed, we could move some of those, if there's any budgetary savings, we could move them to this new division and help offset what we might ask the council for approval for the next funding cycle. We have intentionally left this, what I call off-cycle, because again, it's a very important decision to be made and discussed each year, and we didn't want that discussion to not happen. However, that being said, it is something that I feel very strongly about, I think over the next year, we can come up with the solutions. My hope is that this will be the only time that we have to have this discussion, but if it's not, the way the resolution is written and the intention of staff is that we would come back to this governing body and have this discussion again about how we might move forward funding the next year with the Swimming Pool Designated Fund. We've, you know, we're looking at potentially three to five years before we start building a swimming pool, and we cannot withstand three to five years of the kinds of challenges that we've had. And City Manager Ingram has already mentioned to you that we have an item scheduled, or from the goal-setting session, staff is planning to bring the oil revenue recovery item back to council for consideration. And if it proves to turn out the way that the consultant is projecting, it will be a significant source of revenue. And some of the other options that we've listed in the staff report would then be taken off the table, because if we can have sustainable revenue, we're more than happy to move forward in the same path that we've, that we've moved forward every year, and that's still continue to have zero-based budgeting, continue to look at the staffing needs that we have, and the funding that we have available, and making all of the departments, once again, communicate to us and, and sort of defend their position and their budget, you know, why we need to keep those costs in the budget. Anecdotally, I'll, I'll share with you one thing, and then I'll be done, and we can, we can open it up for questions. But a week ago, I happened to be talking to one of our officers who I came across over at the Westcom, and he was sharing with us a story in, that occurred just that day, and that he had received a call for service from the Eves. And when the officer arrived at the Eves, the person that called had called because he wanted our officer to remove the satellite dish that was installed without permission. And I'm not sure how long the call took, but ultimately, it ended up that the officer very politely said, you know, it's, it's not something that I would normally do, and while I appreciate the predicament that you're in, I'm not going to climb up on the roof and take down a satellite dish that was installed because it, it wasn't done with your permission. So I can imagine that threefold increase in calls for service probably include a small percentage of calls that are very similar to the one that, that I just shared with you, but I thought it was appropriate for this discussion to give you an idea of just what I've heard in conversations. So with that, staff's presentation is concluded, and any one of the three of us will be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Wow, that was pretty complete. Thank you very much. Councilmember Deaton, you had questions?
I've got a lot of them, but I, I think I'd like to have other people ask.
Okay. Anyone else, Tom?
Sure. First, first off, for, for the finance, for, take the money that we need for this year, would it be, since we're already into the year, wouldn't it be less, like a partial year?
Councilmember Moore, that's why I highlighted the fact that we're keeping this off-cycle. So we want to have an allocation for, basically, a year from now, to go through a year from now, because we don't want to presume it in the budget, we don't want it to get lost in the budget, and if we're, if our challenge isn't fixed in a year, we need to have another significant discussion about continuing the funding. So it was staff's intention to leave it separate and fund it for a year.
Okay. Going from thirty-three to thirty-five seems like just a very small increase, is that really enough officers for you to, is that going to make much of a difference?
No, but if you recall, we did have a, we had a council meeting here, and that same question came up, and I didn't go all in, is kind of what, that came about at that meeting. It is a small increase, but anybody can help at this point. I mean, I could, I could field two additional officers, I could put them out there, I can reduce some of the investigations that are going on in detectives, but long-term, no. I think, I think this is a, this is the immediate need, and I, I think we discussed in some of these other, you know, coffee with the cops, and some of these other avenues, we've discussed other alternatives for the future, but right now, you know, if, if we can get those two, it will help.
How many? How many of the thirty-three are filled right now?
Right now, we have three, we're at thirty-one, right, I think?
Thirty.
Thirty, and I, we have three that hopefully will be able to start here in December, right, Mike?
Yes.
And, and those two additional officers will take some time to get.
And have we looked at, I know the, the jail staff is about six, has that been looked at as maybe reducing that staff to help?
Well, actually, for staffing, this is the first time in a long time we've been up full staff in the jail.
Okay.
So we just, we've typically been running short in the jail, we finally got up to staff on the jail.
If I could ask a clarification question, were you asking about the jail staff because they might be able to be used as field personnel?
Yeah, well, yeah, if we switch, maybe have three people instead of six, like, yeah, add three more policemen.
Well, they're, they're not sworn, they're not, well, I shouldn't say that, they're, they're not police officers, they're jail personnel, so they, they don't have the same capabilities as a police officer.
Okay. What about community service officers? Have we, have we looked at that? And I guess it seems like the residents feel like there's less of a police presence, if you have, if we can get more people out there, it seems like that would be helpful.
Well, community service officers actually play a different role, they, they issue parking citations, they are, they are not, how do I say, they're civilian, non-police officers, they don't carry a weapon. And I think the type of people that the community is asking for are people in black and white police cars, showing a presence that can reduce the crime by driving by a location where a criminal might be considering robbing a location or burglarizing a house, those are the kind of officers that we need.
And have we looked at, I know that we're looking at parking right now, and, you know, putting new meters in and so on, is that another thing we could look at?
The, the parking plan that we have going right now would potentially be able to generate some additional revenue from the meter perspective, because with the types of meters that we might implement, there is a way to monitor the space activity, and likely will create additional, excuse me, additional turnover in those, in, in the particular lots where we're deploying the new meters. Also, we have more meter usage now because of credit card usage and the ability to take credit cards in, in the coin lots on Main Street. So we have seen a higher dollar volume, the expectation is that we would see a larger revenue coming in. The revenue generated by the lots on Main Street is roughly at the hundred and ten-thousand-dollar level. So when I'm talking about an increase, I'm talking maybe about a one or two or three percent increase on a hundred and ten-thousand dollars. So while an increase to that stream of revenue, not a significant increase overall to add to the police department.
I guess I'd probably share the, I mean, I think we all want more police, because we know that crime has increased, but at the same time, we're worried about paying for it on a regular basis, and taking out of reserves, I think.
Yeah, I think that's something we're all concerned with. But any other questions? Councilmembers, Sostarsik?
Not at this moment, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Vera Papan?
First with the pool, the agreement, can you put the bar chart up again briefly, please? The discussion with the, the school, the lease agreement?
Yes.
So has it started, is it in the middle, is it at the end? I know in, in the report, it says two thousand fourteen, we retain the consultant firm, but this starts at two thousand seventeen, so.
We have, there have been some concepts that were developed for the site, and I do believe that was already reviewed by staff at the school district. And that's where it's at right now, we did recently meet with them, and they, they laid out a timeline, they laid out a process that would require- that would require a, I envisioned, I put a year out there because I thought that's about appropriate. It would be a situation where we would go to the school board, they would look at what we're proposing, and then they would give us input and we would come back to council.
But the question was, you had the discussion or it started or it's going to start tomorrow?
We did have a discussion, we had a discussion with school board staff. And they said they are definitely, they gave us criteria of what it would take to move forward and that it was possible to move forward.
So you're still moving forward with that?
Exactly, exactly. They're aware of our project, they, their preliminary approval is, they're okay with it moving forward provided that some criteria is met.
The concept that was presented to the council and I believe the school board showed renderings for the pool at Magaw, but I don't believe we saw anything for the Navy site.
That is correct.
So did we ever get to see that in the meantime or will we see it in the near future?
The Navy site, I believe the rendering will occur once we get approval of the, once we all, once the council agrees that that is a site that would be pursued.
Because we've got the renderings for the Magaw.
Well, the Pentagon, I believe we're waiting for Pentagon to give final approval before we invest the necessary cost to develop that, that concept plan.
Okay, because I thought we hired a consultant to develop a concept plan and they provided one at Magaw, but didn't provide one at the Navy site?
I would have, I was, I asked him to come down and he was involved in that process, I was not, so I'm going to ask him to kind of maybe walk through the process of what happened at that time.
A concept, a concept plan was not actually a part of the submittal to the Navy, it wasn't what they requested. They requested it mostly in data form at this point in it. Staff's thought was developing a concept plan at this time is going to be a cost that's going to count against that agreement with the consultant until the Navy needs it. And I believe also the Navy wants to be the one identifying the exact space on their property of where the pool will be located. So it's a little premature in the Navy. On the other hand, the school district, that was what they wanted to see first before any discussions were to be had, was they wanted to see a, what I would call as opposed to a concept plan though, more of a space plan was how it was looked at, it was just to see what could fit there, not saying what sizes or anything like that, it was really just space planning purposes that those exhibits were shown.
Okay. So is the architectural firm still on contract?
Yes. It's there.
Is there a deadline for that?
When the project's complete.
Okay. Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to say I care a lot about public safety and also respect the police department. I've seen the work they do, I'm on the streets a lot and I really respect the work they do, but I also care about the fiscal responsibility of the city. And I think we need to talk about a sustainable solution to pay for these services. These are long-term services. Some of these concepts have been discussed, they haven't moved very much. If the oil and gas revenue is something that can happen sooner than later, I think we should jump on that and pursue that. More personnel costs for more benefits, more salaries, more pensions, training, long-term expenses, and I just don't think this resolution addresses that in the long-term. It's a year out, anything can happen in a year. I definitely support the police department. I was in favor of the fleet replacement program and personnel and equipment, you know, a lot of one-time lump sum fees, totally in support of that. I don't think it's sound business practice to take from the general fund to pay for this. And I have reservations with the resolution. I should, I believe we should have the money in place prior to hiring personnel for the long-term. If it was a short-term position, no problem, but it's hard to say where this will go and how we're going to fund it in the long-term. So with that, I'd like to pass it on.
I'm going to go before Councilmember Deaton because hers is probably a lot longer. Could you tell me what Part One crimes are?
Yeah, they, Madam Mayor, they consist of pretty much all those that I read out to you, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny, and auto theft and homicides.
Well, what part of is more serious crimes, like death and murder and armed robbery?
They're all inclusive in Part One crimes, so we're not talking petty theft, which are Part Two crimes and they break down, there's so many other fraud, nonviolent crimes.
Okay, so these are, could be violent?
Yes.
Part One could be violent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just curious about that. I, this whole issue with the police department really highlights the stress on the city's budget. And moving towards capturing some of that oil revenue that's out there is just super important. And I, I'm hoping that I am not relying on that single source to pay for this. I mean, it would be like manna from heaven if we got that money. And it would solve a couple of very pressing issues in terms of how we're going to pay to keep the city going to the expectations of the people who live here. It's not what we want to see happen here, it's what the community expects us to give them. And if we can't maintain that level of service, then by golly, we're in trouble and so are they. So finding out what other sources of revenue are to help pay for the police is very important. There are a couple of other issues on a list of potential fiscal solutions. One is becoming a structural fire fund agency or creating a fire assessment district, fire service fees, you know, there are all kinds of mechanisms we can use to kind of alleviate the stress and buy more police officers. And I'm hoping that we can come up with a solution in the near future. And I think in terms of, yeah, I don't like short-term fiscal solutions either, but I think we will be able to solve this in the next year, at least be well on our way to solving it and knowing where those funds are going to come to repay the aquatic center and to buy us the policemen we need. So that's my editorial on the issue. Councilmember Deaton?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, right. Thank you. Steve, the question I had is, what are we looking for as far as the cost for the pool? Just an approximation.
We know that back in 2009, $5 million was put aside and we know $5 million, and that, there's no document that says that $5 million was, was developed into a project budget, it was just a $5 million allocation.
No, no, I remember that, but what are we looking at as far as the cost of a pool?
We won't know that until a site is specifically chosen and our, the study we have on contract right now has its scope item, but they, we will not develop that, what we call probable project cost in a detailed fashion until the site is chosen and a concept plan is developed and everybody, or I'll call it a preliminary design, and everybody, every stakeholder has approved that, then that budget would be developed. At this point, we do not have it.
Okay, well, as I remember, what did Long Beach pay for their pool?
I...
Okay, I'm just going to throw a number out, okay? Because when we went through all the studies and everything and then Tim, where's Tim? Tim, did we talk about $10 million or something? I, what was it? Was it $10 million?
For Long Beach's pool that they currently have, which is their temporary pool, they paid, I want to say it was just over $5 million. There was some expenses and there was some expenses to it that we wouldn't be responsible for, based, like there were some shipping costs and stuff like that to get the equipment there, that was pretty significant. But there's also some of the factors of what Steve was trying to highlight of it being an aquatic center. Long Beach is their own health department, so they don't have the same requirements that we would have as far as the support buildings that would be necessary to a pool here.
So what were we, I know we threw numbers around.
I mean, Long Beach, their temporary pool was about $5 million to get it in.
And so will $5 million today buy us a pool, whether it's at Magaw or the Navy?
I mean, I think that the answer to that would be is what's the community's need for, what's the community's need? It can buy a pool, but is it going to be a pool that meets the needs of the community?
You can build a $5 million pool, you can build a $10 million pool, so.
Well, that's the answer, I want to know.
You can build a $5 million pool.
And, and can we?
It may not be the aquatic center, as Steve is mentioning, but it will be a pool.
But will it be a pool with all the state permits and with all the things that we, can we build a $5 million pool?
I think we can, but that's up to the Public Works Director.
I would be concerned, based on what I'm hearing on recent spirals of inflation on construction of facilities, I would be concerned that would maybe, we may end up short in a $5 million, if $5 million is a budget to build a community pool, we have to remember the support facilities, we still have to have parking, we still must build a minimum amount of support facilities, including new restrooms, which is required by code now. When that pool was built, it was not required. So you have to have standalone facilities on the deck of the pool and when you put all this together, the pool, it really will depend on the stakeholders and what they expect, but $5 million is really pushing it. And I think it's a little tight, given the current inflationary construction, what's happening in the last two years, $5 million is just not going very far on public projects.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is it's not that far off either. Well, just a reminder, the Long Beach pool is an above-ground pool, it's not constructed in ground. But I think that was more expensive, right? Not less? I can't remember. I guess, let me tell you where I'm trying to go with the thought on this. I don't want to borrow money from the pool. I have to borrow money from the pool. I don't want to do this. I think that taking money from Peter to pay Paul for this type of an expense is not our optimal thing to do. But I'm looking at, what is it, Chief, is it crimes at 25%? Is that Part One crime?
27%, yes, ma'am.
Okay, 27%. All right, so if crimes up, I did my math on 25, so excuse me, that's eight and a quarter police officers that you need just to keep up with the rise in crime. That's, that is absolute safety, that's whether or not we walk outside of our houses in the dark or not. And I'll tell you that we in Old Town are taking the brunt of the crime with the guns. And if I've got a fair shot and somebody is going to come at me, I'm okay with that because I do Pilates. But when they've got a gun, it's not a fair shot. And when I'm comparing a swimming pool on one hand to a guy with a gun on the other, I want to get the safety under control. However, we also need a pool because that is a safety factor for our community, because our children need to learn to swim before they go down into the ocean. Okay, so, so I think that we need both of these, so what we need to do is to figure this thing out together. And I really think that what we need to do is to go after the oil revenue, like you said, Sandra, like you said, Mike. We have a professional who's worked for us before and brought us money, who has told us all and our residents that he can bring us money quickly of money that is owed to us and is sitting there with a statute of limitations running. So for us to put this off any longer is really dumb. So if it's not there, we lose nothing except hope. We do lose hope at that point, because like you said, Sandra, it's a lot of eggs to put in one basket. If we cannot get in this oil money, then we are going to do the other thing that you were talking about, and that is go out and either raise fees or raise taxes, there's not one person here that wants to do that. So what I suggest we do is this, tonight we give Chief Miller the okay to go start getting the officers we need. Two isn't going to do it, but two's a start. And certainly we can watch the trends as we add police. But we go out tonight, we give Chief Miller two police officers tonight, we come back next meeting, we look at the oil revenue, we make the best decision we can on how to get that money without investing money we don't have to get it, and see if we get the money back. If we don't, then we have to go to the next step.
Plan B.
Go to Plan B. But is it a good idea to take money from reserves to pay salaries? No, it's a horrible idea. Is it a good idea to leave our citizens unsafe and not feeling like they can walk at night? No. So what are our choices? We're here to make tough choices. And tonight, what I think we need to do is to look at taking a loan and then, Mike, paying you back, not you, it's our pool, but paying your concern back more than what we take. Use, if we get the oil revenue in to pay it back, it's going to take more than $5 million, I think, from what I remember back in the day when we were talking about it, to build a pool. So let's get, if we can get the oil revenue, let's get it and pay back enough to actually build a pool. So that's, that would be my suggestion. I, do I want to do it? No. Now, I think we've all received emails and we've heard Mr. Goldberg talk tonight about ways that we can cut the budget, and then we heard Vicky talk. I think the really important thing here is a couple of things. I've read on Nextdoor.com, I've read in letters to the editor in The Sun, and I've received phone calls telling me that what we need to do is cut the waste in the budget. Well, what Mr. Goldberg has given us here is to say there is no waste in the budget, that he went through it, item by item, and he couldn't find any waste. So now what he's talking about is that the police officers we do have, we shouldn't, we shouldn't give them a raise when their contracts are up. Or we should pull the police office, the funding for the police officer at the school from our children. Or that we should pay off the pension obligation bond. Well, okay, maybe that's an idea, but then I asked Vicky, Vicky, can you tell us about the pension obligation bond?
Yes, I can, Councilmember Deaton. In, when the pension obligation bond was put out, the idea, the premise is a beautiful premise, because what we did was we took a financial obligation that was going to cost us seven and three-quarters percent, and without extending the maturity on it, we just took it and paid it down at a lower rate. Prior administrations, both at the dais and in the city offices, committed the city to a pension obligation bond that was finally paid off in 2019. It was a private placement, it was done with a bank to a bank, and there is absolutely no way that the city can prepay that. We, in fact, if the city had been able to prepay that debt, as we did with Heron Point and with Pacific Gateway, when we refinanced both of those in 2015, we would have refinanced it at the time. We had conversations with the bank. We had conversations with the bank, and the only thing they didn't do was laugh at us. But for sure, they said, no, we're not interested in refinancing, and there's no clause for you to refinance it. So we'll just basically take our payments and see you when the debt matures.
All right, so we can't do that. And now I'm looking at the others. The council discretionary fund, sounds like that's great, let's take the slush fund away from the council. This is not a slush fund. The discretionary funds that each council member has is to take care of needs that their residents bring to them. Mike just put in a stop sign for his pedestrians that he was asked for. That's safety. It's being used for absolute things that are necessary. I've asked Steve to go back and look at Ocean Avenue and see what he can do with those crosswalks with my discretionary funds. I mean, there are a lot of safety aspects to this town, other than policemen as well. And the discretionary monies, what that means is that each council member can listen to their residents and help their residents get what they need. That's what the point of that is. And by the way, we're almost five months into the year, and I know that I've already spent most of mine, I don't know how much is left in the others. At the end of my year, I will try to save some money and donate it back for police officers, but at this point, I have other safety measures that I need to take care of out of that. I don't know about the contract professional services, we'd all have to talk about that, and the strategic objectives retreats. I know that the city manager and this council has benefited hugely from our retreats and setting and becoming focused. If there's anything I've learned is that running a city by the seat of the pants is not getting us where we're going to go. So can we trim that? Sure. Could we do it a different way? Sure. Are we all open to looking at doing it another way? Sure. But I don't, I've looked at all of this, and if this is what trimming the waste in the budget is about, it doesn't work. We've got to go out and find a way to actually keep an ongoing stream of revenue going. So there's some good ideas here on the fire fees and becoming a structural fire fund. I know Vicky, Jill, and I went out and sat with OCFA, talked to them about becoming a structural fire fund. It didn't look real promising at the time, but we've got a fire committee now. We are starting to meet with the fire committee, starting with Sandra and me tomorrow, Sandra. So we will be looking for every single thing that we can do to put this city into not just a stable position, but in a stable position that creates the kind of culture and quality of life that our residents expect. And with that, I would like to make a motion that we borrow the money from the pool, make a loan from that to be paid back with an eye to the oil revenue next time, next meeting, and get those two police officers started. Is it going to end the crime in the city? No. But is it a start? It's a start. So with that, I'd like to make that motion, please.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, I didn't want this to be a pool versus a police department issue, and that's kind of where it's turning into. To me, it's not about that. It's about fiscal responsibility, it's about sustainability. The oil and gas revenue has been a goal since last year. We should have been resolving this in the meantime, and I think the urgency is on that now. If we waited a month for that, I think that would be fine, you know? Get that in place, as you were talking about, and then go from there. But, you know, I didn't want it to be a pool versus a police department.
And I don't think you should feel that it is a pool. It just happens to be some money that is there that we can borrow against. It just happens to be sitting there as something we can borrow against. It's not, we're going to have police and not a pool. So I don't think you should feel that way, and I understand about waiting and seeing and then, but, okay, so we wait a month, and then we give out a contract to go get it, and then how many months do we wait then? And then how many months does it take Joe to recruit somebody? We've got to get started recruiting because the need against, for crime is now. And if we want somebody in place by the time next visitor-serving summer starts, we've got to get them. If we hire a recruit, it's going to take six months in the academy, then it takes six months on the street. If we do a lateral, which is more expensive, then it's going to take six months to hire and train. So anyway, that's how I, I don't, I agree with you, Mike. It should not be pool versus police, but we have a crime issue right now. And that's why Vicky wanted to keep it on this separate track, so that we have these two officers that aren't just commingled in the budget, they're out there so we can look at it objectively again without having it commingled.
I know it's a tough decision. It's a very difficult decision to be making, but it's one of the tough times that you just have to go one way or the other, and you've got to do the best thing that you feel for the community. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Please vote. Four to one.
We look forward to getting the oil revenue contract next time and seeing if it's in.
Yep. Thank you very much. Okay. We're adjourned to City Council in memory of Shannon Anna Allen, Senior Community Services Officer, to Monday, December 11, 2017, at 5:30 to meet in close session if deemed necessary. Thank you, for those of you who are watching.